To order the Lakewood City Council Hybred City Council Meeting in Lakewood, Colorado, on November 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM. For those who are joining us this evening via telephone, the dial-in number is 720-707-2699. And the webinar ID, which will be the same for those tuning in on Zoom, is 870-1796-0123. Again, 870-1796-0123. You'll press pound to get in, and pound once again. And when we get to the appropriate times for public comment, I'll have instructions there. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Counselors Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Counselor Vincent is absent. Counselor Strom.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Springsteen. Counselor Springsteen is absent. Counselor Stewart.
Here.
And over.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a call.
Great, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you for taking the time to come out this evening, as well as those who are tuning in online. Two items that I just want to discuss real quick. Item 17 is Ordinance 2022-24, which is amending the municipal ward boundaries for the city of Lakewood. This is just out there to make sure folks have plenty of time to contemplate the two choices. It is a first reading ordinance, so I will ask for that to be put back into the consent agenda. And on December 12th, two different ordinances with the direction that council gave at the study session will be presented on second and final reading. So we want to make sure the community has plenty of opportunity to engage in that. And I also like to mention, as we've received quite a few emails related to issues surrounding guns, there is nothing officially on our agenda or has been on our agenda, but you are certainly welcome to speak during public comment. So with that, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a moment of silent prayer. During that, I would like to honor the victims of the Club Q tragedy and share our thoughts and prayers with them, as well as our neighbors in Colorado Springs and the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Let the record note that Counselor Springsteen is with us. Thank you. Okay, a quick statement of conflict. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. So we have a cool proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to please read item five.
We can't hear.
Okay.
We can't hear anything.
I can hear you. Thank you. Please.
Item five, proclamation honoring Taylor's Rental Center.
Great, thank you. So I would ask Counselor, I'll come down in a second, ask Counselor Abel to please read this, as he brought this forward, and kind of in celebration of Small Business Saturday, which we did pass, we have a great opportunity to honor a family that's been in business in Ward Three for a very long time. And so I'd invite the Taylors to please feel free to join me at the dais, and I'll ask Counselor to please read the pro.
Sure.
Whereas Taylor's Rental Center, located at 7800 West Mississippi Avenue, has been serving the city of Lakewood since September of 1968. And whereas Carol Taylor and her late husband Wayne Taylor are the founders of Taylor's Rental Center, and whereas they are a fourth-generation, family-owned and operated business with strong ties to their community and believe in the importance of family and community. Taylor's Rental Center specializes in friendly service and competitive rental rates and are able to provide their customers the necessary assistance needed when selecting products. And whereas Taylor's Rental Center is an eco-friendly business by recycling almost everything and selling unserviceable equipment as scraps to recyclers to reduce impact on the environment. And whereas the city council of Lakewood would like to thank Taylor's Rental Center for their dedications and contributions to the city of Lakewood for over 50 years. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do recognize Taylor's Rental Center, given under my hand and seal.
Well, thank you, Counselor, and again, thank you for bringing this forward. And I've had the opportunity to stop in and chat a little bit, but such an incredible history, and we thank you for your service to our community. It's a great way to honor you, and if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to.
Well, I'd like to thank Charlie and Mayor Paul for selecting us for this. I think it's a wonderful award. It's hard to put 54 years of service into a couple of words, but it's been a wonderful time. I've thoroughly enjoyed it. If you can start in high school sharpening chainsaws and come by 50 years later and still enjoy the job you do, you've indeed lived and blessed. And, you know, I owe that to our mother here, a 93-year-old. Her and my father started this business back in 68. My sister, who works with me daily. My son still comes and works with me one day a week. And, you know, it's all about family values, community, support in your community, and interacting with people, not just being a business. Many businesses are, but we like to be a part of the community, and I really appreciate this. It's a wonderful award, and thank you very much.
So next up is general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. For other agenda items, there will be separate public comment opportunities. There will be a three-minute time limit, and you'll have a little timer up here. At 30 seconds, it'll go yellow, and when your time's up, it'll go red, and I'll politely ask you to wrap up. For those who are participating online, when your 30 seconds is, when you're at 30 seconds, you'll hear a ding, and then I'll ding again to wrap that up. I'd ask that we all respect the decorum of city council chambers and direct all comments to the city council. We want to make sure that we're civil, and disrespectful disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. And with that, I'll go ahead and get started. And actually, I'd also like to ask, there's a lot of people that wish to speak, and we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to make sure that we don't have a lot of redundancy. And if you wish to just yield and say, "I agree," that's fine also. So, Mr. Clerk, do you want to call the fir? You want me to call?
Yeah, I do not have the list. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I will get us going. And just a reminder for those calling in, if you want to raise your hand now, I see some hands going up, which is great. When you're called upon, please give us your name and address, or name and ward also. So I'll start with our first three. Mr. Netzer, come on down. And then after him, I have Steve, looks like 333 South Pierce, maybe, and then Carol Tarpley. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Mayor Paul, City Council, thank you for giving me this brief three minutes. My name is Rick Netzer, and I used to have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director at Edinburgh Classical Academy in Lakewood. It's a prime school in Lakewood, and I wanted to make sure that you are aware, first of all, of what we do. We are a pre-K through 12th grade classical academy. We are a tuition-free charter school that exists in the city of Lakewood. While the enrollment of Jefferson County Public Schools is dwindling, our enrollment is up over 11% for this year. We are up over 930 students in our two buildings. We have a building at Jefferson and Teller, which is our high school, and then four blocks south, we have our K8, our pre-K8 building. But if you know that area at all, you know that it's quite a conundrum of buildings. Our high school is on the corner, then Denver Christian, then our classical K8 building, and then Colorado Academy is just around the corner. We have a car line problem. We actually had a young kindergartner of ours get hit by a car during the horrible sun that comes in that way in the fall. And so we have a lot of parents who are very concerned about our car line problem. I'd also like to tell you that we're quite a success story because we draw kids not only from Lakewood, but from 21 cities across the greater Denver area. I think that's fascinating information to know. We need your help. There is a bar that prohibits our people from entering and exiting our campuses other than from one street, and that is up Teller Street. The bar is put there because of fire requirements by the fire department, and it's actually owned by the city and county of Denver. I'm asking that Lakewood, since I believe Edinburgh to be a star in your crown, so to speak, I ask that you step in and assist us in this, in this area. It is keeping us from exiting Teller onto Pierce Street. There is a road that's there, and I know that there's, the city and county of Denver have said that Lakewood should have never allowed this portion in the Academy Park area to grow to the extent that it has. But we find ourselves there, and we also find ourselves in an area where townhomes are still being built, rather expensive townhomes. So we actually have an egress curb that is on our property, and I don't even know if that's a possibility for us, too. But we would, I would personally, as Executive Director of the school, I'd like to invite you to our campuses. We'd love to give you a tour because we do things a little differently at Edinburgh. And so thank you for your time this evening. Anything that you could do on our behalf as a city council to represent mostly Lakewood people who attend our school would be much appreciated. We've actually had one of our board members, one of your board members, sit on our capstone projects that our seniors present every spring, and that was a pleasure to have you representing on our capstone projects that our seniors presented. Thank you very much for your evening.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming out. And again, forgive me, I can't read the first name, but 333 South.
Yeah, that's Steve Donner. I'm waiting for the other part. Any get to us first.
Okay. For another, for another, okay, great. I'll come back. So not general public comment. So an agenda item tonight?
Is this a bad issue?
This is general public comment.
Yeah, that's in.
Yep.
Yeah, it's your turn.
Okay, then after that, we have, come on down, please. I have Carol Tarpley, then Taylor Rhodes, and then Patricia McMahon. And if you want to kind of just start getting ready, we'll keep this flowing. Good evening, welcome.
Well, welcome yourself, too, because the issue that's going on right now is not really, shouldn't be here at all. America's been America for a long time. There's no reason to change the laws that already exist, and they want extra stuff that's not going to make a difference. So I'm thinking, what else can we do? We can be human beings and go forward and skip the prejudice that's going on. That's all I can say. I'd like to say that the two minutes and 28 seconds, can I leave that to?
Where does it go?
Tim?
To.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So that's it. I won't get into it yet.
Thank you. Ms. Tarpley, then Mr. Rhodes, then Ms. McMahon, then Ms. Francone.
We have a Second Amendment constitutional right to have guns. We have the right and the obligation to protect ourselves, our families, and our property wherever we are. Lakewood cannot constitutionally or legally convert a constitutional right into a crime, which is what your proposed garbage gun bans and proposals would do. For example, Miranda v. Arizona and Simmons v. United States quoting, "The claim and exercise of a constitutional right cannot be converted into a crime." Every time some idiot proposes and demands gun control, criminals celebrate because the fewer guns law-abiding citizens have, the better it is for those criminals. Criminals do not pay any attention to any laws against guns. The best thing against crime is for every law-abiding citizen to have guns, a good guy or gal with a gun to stop a bad guy with a gun. Do not enact any so-called gun control ordinances or measures. You're supposed to work for we, the people, not against us, which is exactly what you will be doing if you do the ridiculous gun control measures or bans. Gun control measures benefit only the criminals and hurt law-abiding citizens. Punish the criminals who use guns, not we, the people. Gun control measures or bans are a serious overreach by government and do nothing to control gun violence. They're just another controlling power grab by government. Just because some people don't like guns doesn't give them the right to dictate to the rest of us. I donate the rest of my time to Taylor.
Okay, thank you. We don't donate time, but Mr. Rhodes, come on down. And Ms. McMahon, Ms. Francone, Ms. Wollers, and Ms. Frickle. Good evening.
Good evening. They don't make these microphones for normal-sized folk. Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. For those that do not know me, my name is Taylor Rhodes, and I represent Rocky Mountain Gun Owners, our 250,000 members across the great state of Colorado, and roughly 8,000 members right here in Lakewood, Colorado. Thank you for having me speak today. Late last week, as I was getting the turkey ready and preparing to have a good Thanksgiving, I had 20 or so member calls saying, "You're not going to believe what Moms Demand Action is up to this time." So of course, I, you know, it's becoming more likely that they're up to no good, so I say, "Yeah, of course I can believe they're what they're doing." You know, these are the same women that traded their red coats for their red t-shirts. So I said, "Well, sure, I'll come." So there are five ordinances that I'm sure we'll hear from the other side, as we'll say, that they would like to enact. As I am sure you are familiar, Rocky Mountain Gun Owners, myself, and plaintiffs across the great state of Colorado are currently suing Superior Boulder, in addition to the county of Boulder, on unconstitutional gun legislation, in addition to the state of Colorado and Jared Polis. Not to mention, we are winning these lawsuits handily. An Obama-appointed judge has now ruled in our favor, and a Biden-appointed judge has now ruled in our favor. Based on these five proposed ordinances that they would like to see come down the pipe, you would fall in our crosshairs for a lawsuit. I can promise you that. You see, the Bruin decision, which, if you're not familiar with the Bruin decision, it is the most recent gun case out of the Supreme Court, it did not just outlaw any type of ban on so-called assault weapons or standard-capacity magazines. It actually rejected any interest-balancing inquiry akin to intermediate scrutiny, simply meaning you cannot ban a firearm just because you don't like it or you think that it is scary. Additionally, many of the proposed bans that you will hear of today have already been challenged in federal court and have been defeated in federal court. Lastly, if you feel, if you do feel strongly enough to take up their ideas and you want to go down the pipe of this long, hard road, our legal team and accounting teams are projecting each lawsuit that we're involved in will cost each party roughly $750,000, three-quarters of a million dollars, to defend, just for you to lose. On behalf of the thousands of Rocky Mountain Gun Owners members right here in the city of Lakewood, please never take up gun control here in Lakewood, Colorado.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so let's get that out because we're not going to do that again. So if you want to go ahead and do that next time, please, but no audible support or discourse, please. Okay. Ms. Francone, you're next, or Ms. McMahon, you're up, Ms. Francone, Ms. Wollers, Ms. Frickle, and we'll go from there. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patty McMahan. I am the Public Affairs Director for the 2022 Club for U.S. Congress Campaign and the Richard Ward for U.S. Congress Campaign. I address this council as someone who dislikes guns. Anyone who knows me knows my feelings about guns. I don't just dislike guns, I am honestly afraid of them. So when I speak about guns, I am speaking as someone who will never own a gun. According to Everytown for Gun Safety, Colorado is number 10 in the nation for gun strength laws. Also, according to this website, in an average year, 850 people die by guns in Colorado. Of the top 10 states for gun strength law, only three of those top states had more gun deaths than Colorado. Of the top, of the 10 states with the worst gun strength laws, only two had more gun deaths than Colorado. This means eight states with the worst gun strength laws in the nation had less gun deaths than Colorado. And with the exception of Arizona, all the states that border Colorado had less people dying by guns in the average year than the state of Colorado. I honestly don't know what all this means, except Colorado is approaching the issue of gun violence wrong. I do not believe gun violence is a legislative issue, and I do not believe more gun laws will stop gun violence. But obviously, something will, because states are succeeding where Colorado is failing. I'm not saying laws can't be part of a successful solution in Colorado, but we must accept that more laws haven't made our state successful. We need to figure out what will make Colorado successful, because if other states can figure it out, so can we. I urge this council to join with other city councils and form a commission to study how other communities have been successful and how Colorado can achieve the success. Everyone in this room, we want a positive solution to solve gun violence, right? So I think if we can address this issue by building bridges and not silos, I think we can save lives and protect our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Ms. Francone, Ms. Wollers, Ms. Frickle, looks like Pat Rochafer, and then Cindy Dominguez. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Honorable Councilman. I'm Tina Francone. You may know me as former RTD Director. You may know me as former Jefferson County Commissioner. What you may not know is I am the owner and senior firearms instructor for straightforward shooting. We are a firearms instructor. We're going into our 13th year. We've qualified over 6,000 Coloradans for their concealed handgun permit. I am an NRA-certified firearms instructor in pistol and seven other disciplines. I'm also an NRA-certified training counselor. And as an industry professional, I know there's growing concern about gun violence, and it horrifies me, too. I think that's the thing that people don't understand. As a gun owner, as a responsible gun owner, I am just as horrified as everyone else is with the recent events that we've seen. But you should understand that the vast majority of gun owners are safe, responsible, and law-abiding. So more legislation trying to replace the holes in the Swiss cheese doesn't help. Crimes and violence are committed by people not in their right minds, and whether that's due to mental illness or substance abuse or something else, by definition, crimes are not committed by law-abiding citizens. More restrictions on people who have taken the time to educate and train themselves on safe firearm handling is not the problem here. Counselors, as you consider what comes before you, these, these suggestions to you, ask yourself, would they have stopped the horrific events that we've seen in the last couple of weeks? I think you can honestly say no. Counselors, what we need is enforcement of the laws that are already on the books. What we need are elected officials to be bold and to think outside the box, develop mental health, solutions to mental health issues that drive people to commit crimes and, you know, inflict violence on other people. These proposed ordinances are just a Band-Aid. They're not designed to solve anything other than to reduce responsible firearms ownership. What we need are solutions based on real-world experience and community involvement from all constituents. And just by show of hands, how many people are here in opposition to these ordinances? So look at those hands, really. Tonight, you've learned that there are a lot of people that would help you craft sensible, reasonable policies to help defer some of this gun violence. We need to craft common sense viable solutions to help reduce gun violence. I am confident in your abilities, and I appreciate the fact, I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Wollers, Ms. Frickle. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jen Dilwollers. I'm a resident of Golden, but I am also the lead of the Jefferson County Moms Demand Action. And so I am here on behalf of our members that perhaps don't want to speak tonight or couldn't make it tonight, and our group in general. I can tell you a little bit about our organization. We are not anti-gun. I can tell you a little bit about our organization. We are not anti-gun. We are not anti-Second Amendment. We are anti-gun violence. We are here to try to ask you to consider common sense gun legislation, things that are research-backed. And I can tell you that I'm a former Jeffco D.A. I have some connection to Jefferson, to Lakewood Police Department, and I have seen the gun violence in this community and the things that it has done to victims in this community, myself. First, I do want to address the lawsuit that was mentioned by a prior speaker. There is a lawsuit by Rocky Mountain Gun Owners. However, it's in federal court. That lawsuit is only regarding the assault weapons ban that was passed in Boulder, Louisville, et cetera. We have taken that ordinance out of the ordinance we are asking you to consider. So the thing that they are suing over is not something we are asking you to consider at this time. We can let that go through the court system, and that should not be an issue. Further, they are not winning in court. They survive summary judgment, which means that it just didn't get dismissed right off the bat. So I'm here to ask you to consider these ordinances in Lakewood. We have seen similar ordinances passed in Denver, Boulder, Edgewater, Louisville, Superior, and Lyons. We have spoken to councils in Wheat Ridge, Arvada, and Golden, and they are considering these measures as well. And from what I know, they are interested in speaking to other councils about doing these things together. And they can do this due to the recent preemption law that was repealed, which empowers you to pass common sense ordinances to regulate firearms. You know, I heard on the radio this morning someone talking about the shooting in Colorado Springs, and she was a professor dealing with gun violence, and she said, "This is a complex problem. It requires a lot of different solutions." So you might think, "What can we do at the local level about this?" Which, as she said, everyone is horrified about this, and it's not just mass shootings. It is suicide. It is children getting killed by parents not holding their guns safely, storing them safely. But research shows that there is a public health approach to gun violence, and it's called the Swiss cheese approach. It's kind of like what we saw during COVID, but you layer different ordinances, different laws on top of each other. And then it's like the Swiss cheese approach. So the more holes that are covered, the less that gun violence gets through. And in places where they have more laws, more ordinances, there is less gun violence per person. Oh, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Frickle. Then Pat Rothshaffer, Cindy Dominguez, and then Laurel Immer. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me with the mask right now? Okay. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Eva Frickle, and I'm a longtime resident of Ward Four. I'm here tonight to ask you to support gun violence prevention ordinances to protect our community. Gun violence in the United States and here in our community is out of control. Ward Four had an incident on October 8th this year at Nike Supers, where I do my shopping in Green Mountain. We shouldn't be in fear of our lives when we go about our regular errands. The Second Amendment requires a well-regulated militia, and that is not currently the case. The general acceptance of gun violence as a weird life in America is mind-blowing to me. I grew up an ocean away, and my native country has had a completely different response. In March 1996, in a village a few miles from where I grew up, and where my cousin still lives, a man shot dead 16 pupils, one teacher, and injured 15 others before killing himself. By the end of 1997, Parliament had banned private ownership of most handguns, building on measures passed following the Hungerford killings in 1988, including semi-automatic weapon bans. The UK has only had one mass shooting in 2010 that left 12 dead since Dumblane. That is three in my lifetime, and as you can tell, I'm getting up there. The US has had 607 so far this year alone. Compared to the action taken in other countries, the ordinances you are being asked to consider are incredibly basic, straightforward gun-safety measures that do not impinge on Second Amendment rights. These are two of the measures you're being asked to support. Creating waiting periods. Waiting periods can save lives when someone is contemplating suicide. In addition, they can protect our broader community. In April 19, 18-year-old Saul Paske was able to fly to Colorado from Florida and purchase a farmer with no waiting period. This resulted in school districts across the state, including Jeffco, closing due to the fear of her trying to replicate Columbine. This example also supports raising the minimum age for gun buyers. Imposing magazine limits. Hunters are only allowed to have five bullets in their gun. Why on earth does someone require more, other than to kill people? In conclusion, the six, the five measures being requested will save lives and help keep the community safer. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Ms. Rothshaffer. Ms. Dominguez, then Ms. Immer, then Mike McKinney. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Pat Rothshaffer. I actually live in, my mailing address is in Littleton, unincorporated Jefferson County. However, I have interests in Lakewood. I shop in Lakewood. I drive through Lakewood every morning when I drive to the office where I volunteer. My daughter happens to work right across the way at the Cultural Center. And so even though we don't live here, we do have interests. And it's important to me that we have sensible gun regulation. We're not talking about taking away everyone's guns. We're not talking about reducing how many guns they can own. We're not talking about any of that stuff. We keep getting misunderstood. We are talking about sensible gun regulation. My older daughter, on May 30th, 2003, her body was found on a welfare check. The babysitter, her son had been left at a babysitter's, and she didn't come pick him up. And so after two days, I don't know why she waited two days, but she waited two days, and she called the police, and they went on a welfare check. And it turns out that my daughter's boyfriend got really angry. And since he had a handgun right there, he shot her dead. And then he woke up. And he's like, "Oh, no. Now, we know this happened," because he then shot himself dead. And so at least we didn't have a trial to go through. Now, you know, some people might be sitting here going, "This isn't a regulation thing." Yeah, it is. There are some regulations that could have helped in that case. We currently, Moms Demand and Everytown for Gun Safety is putting forward a plan for safe gun storage. I believe Colorado does have safe gun storage laws. The penalties are rather puny, but with safe gun storage, where you lock your unloaded weapon up in one nice, secured place, really secure, you lock your ammunition up in a second location, it takes at least a couple moments. It takes a couple moments for someone to think before they put the ammunition in the gun and they shoot. And had we had that, this is the only measure, out of all the ones that I've heard of Moms Demand Action putting forth, that had this been in place and had my daughter's boyfriend actually had his guns locked up, she might actually still be alive.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. Ms. Dominguez. Ms. Immer, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Clifford. Good evening.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Cindy Dominguez, and I'm here with my husband Gary. We are the parents of Audra Dominguez. My family and I have been personally devastated by gun violence. On October 1st of this year, our daughter attended a child's birthday party. During the party, the dad of the child who was celebrating their party decided to handle his unsecured and loaded firearm while intoxicated. During the handling of this gun, my beautiful daughter was shot in the back of the head. She died a few days later. This guy thought he was a good guy. He thought he was a good gun owner. He thought he knew what he was doing. For 10 years, I was the licensed teacher at Bear Creek High School in Lakewood for profoundly disabled children. Our daughter, Audra, volunteered in the program and made a difference to everyone she encountered. She was a 4.0 college student and on her way to doing great things before gun violence ended her life. It's extremely difficult for me to even stand before you. I'm only seven weeks out from my beautiful daughter being killed. However, I know how important it is. As a special-needs teacher for over 20 years in Jeffco, I know the importance of fighting for those who don't have a voice anymore. I'm asking you to consider the following: raising the minimum age to buy firearms, adding waiting periods before purchasing firearms, additional gun dealer regulations, and banning ghost guns. No parent should ever have to endure the pain we feel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Ms. Immer, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Clifford. Mr. Arrent. Good evening.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Laurel Immer, and I'm here to represent the Heller Foundation, as I'm the Colorado Ambassador for the Heller Foundation. I don't want to repeat a lot of things that have already been said. I simply want to just make a couple of key points. I am a common sense thinker, and the answer to gun violence in America is not a gun issue. The answer is education, education, education. Anything can be used as a weapon. Committing an act of evil and murder is an act of the heart. It's not an act of the weapon that you choose. If a person has evil intent in their heart, they'll kill you with anything they want. The gun happens to maybe be there, but they could also use a knife, just as we saw last than two weeks ago of forced dormitory students killed by a knife. I don't see anybody here looking to legislate more knife laws, do you? We can go back to Genesis, Chapter 4, Cain and Abel, the firstborn of Adam and Eve. Cain killed his brother with a rock. If someone wants to kill you, they'll find the weapon at hand. We can fast-forward into Samuel of the Bible as well. There, we had a good guy with a handful of pebbles and a slingshot who defended his people and his countrymen with a slingshot against evil. The only way to stop gun violence is with well-trained, educated people who have the right to bear arms that shall not be infringed upon. You can review hellerfoundation.org for more information, see the cases that Heller has implemented, specifically Heller I, and I also want to direct you to the Supreme Court case that was handled in June of this year, where they struck down the New York concealed carry ban by the US Supreme Court. The Second Amendment has been upheld time and time again. You will face millions of dollars that your tax-paying citizens, sitting here and around your community, will have to fess up to pay when you implement unconstitutional gun laws in the city of Lakewood, Colorado. I urge you to stop, think, educate yourselves, educate your people, use knowledge, and train professionals, and get a broader opinion of what it takes to protect people in this country. Mental illness, healthcare, opioid crisis. There are as many suicides from opioids as there are ever from guns, but nobody here is legislating for opioid addiction, are they? It's a matter of the heart. Evil is a matter of the heart. Take that and listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're not going to do that again. Please, I appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Clifford, Mr. Arrent, and then, forgive me, but the address is North Emerson, maybe? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Mike McKinney. The way of introduction, I'm a retired state trooper, retired Colonel out of the Army Reserves. And what really bothered me about them wanting to raise the age, I think about the soldiers I had in Iraq and Afghanistan that were under, or were 18. If, to think about it, if we took all the guns away from them, I would have only been left with about 400 soldiers to fight our battles. So I really, I don't see how that solves anything by taking it away from an 18-year-old, the right to purchase an arm. Also, if we give them the right to vote at 18, if they're mature enough for that, I think they're mature enough to own a weapon. So I know this is kind of a mute point, because it's not on the agenda, but please, please think long and hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clifford. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Fred Clifford. I live in Ward 1. And I agree with a lot of what was spoken before. One of the things that's interesting about the gun issue is both sides have the same ultimate goal. And I don't quite understand that. I think most people that want to protect gun rights, their main focus is safety. I actually knocked on a lot of doors this year. I was a candidate for legislature. And I don't really know how many doors I knocked on, but, you know, I talked to a lot of people, and I asked, one of the questions was a general question, "What is your number-one issue?" And safety came up quite a bit. I think I had two or three people that said they want to gun control, and then I had two or three people that said their main issue was the Second Amendment. So there was a kind of dichotomy. So I don't really know why there's that dichotomy, because if you take away the ability to defend yourself, if you take away the ability to interduct a crime in progress, that's going to make people less safe. And I retired last year, and now I'm a state employee. I teach at a community college. My job as an instructor, I took the same oath that you all take. So that's one of the things that we need to do. We need to protect our constitutional rights. The oath that we all take is, one of the features of there is to defend the US Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Colorado. You cannot amend an amendment in the Constitution, whether it's the federal Constitution or the state Constitution, by whittling away at it. You have, there's a process, and I don't think that process will ever happen. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And Van Bruce, good evening, welcome. And then, again, forgive me, I think it's North Emerson Street, Denver.
Thank you. And Mayor, I'd like to ask you to speak more loudly and with a bit more articulation.
Most people don't want me to speak loudly.
Well, there's a lot of loud speech, so it's nice to hear a mayor who's soft-spoken. But in this case, it's hard to understand you a bit. My name's Catherine Rude. I live on Emerson Street in Denver. My father had grown up on a large ranch in eastern Washington State, and as a child, I grew up around guns my father kept in our Arvada home. He taught me to shoot, and in my college summers, I worked at the Sea Lays U Dude Ranch in Granby, where I sometimes did skeet shooting with other staff and guests. I graduated from CU Boulder in the mid-1970s, and a close friend of mine, Doug Shower, had married, had a child, and had recently gotten a position with the municipal government in Longmont, and he worked in their municipal building. While at work, a colleague of Doug's had expressed anxiety about her husband's behavior when she had told him she wanted to divorce. On an afternoon soon after, her husband walked into the workplace. My friend Doug, being of a protective nature, got up to stand near the wife. Her spouse pulled a semi-automatic handgun out from his jacket and shot Doug twice in the chest, murdering him. The shooter then proceeded to fire at other city workers, murdering another and injuring three more. After that mass workplace shooting, which family and friends still believe was preventable, my perspective on firearms, and especially on the easy accessibility of firearms, changed. The shooter had purchased the gun legally, over the counter, just three days earlier. This was prior to any national law requiring a background check and prior to domestic violence restraining orders being used to block gun sales. The latter might have stopped that shooting. But the list we have for you today, one specific ordinance could also very likely have prevented Doug's murder, and that is a required waiting period between purchase and pickup. The shooter was not mentally ill. He was an average, and until then, that moment, a law-abiding- He was an average, and until then, that moment, a law-abiding, middle-class, white guy who was furious and probably despairing over his wife's decision to leave him. He had a short-term, temporary motivation to buy his uncontrolled rage at his wife. Waiting periods do create a buffer time for the emotionally distraught and outraged to cool off. A 2019 Duke University study found that waiting periods reduce homicides by 17% in states that have them. Waiting periods are also an important tool in suicide prevention. Firearms suicide is a leading cause of injury, death for every age group in the United States. In 2020, firearms were used in over half of all suicides. After Doug's preventable murder, I began to work for stricter laws beginning in the 1980s. I witnessed the gun lobby fight for years, the passage of background checks. The gun lobby also fought laws to prevent villains from purchasing firearms, and they fought and continued to fight through 2021, laws to block purchases by abusers convicted of domestic violence.
Thank you.
So, I can just say from this experience, the gun lobby is not to be viewed as a friend to personal freedom or to public safety. Their primary goal is the maximization of profits from gun sales.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I might have skipped over, there's a Summer Street address, Morrison. There you are. Good evening. And then, after that, Fig Street, forgive me, can't read all of the writing. Good evening, welcome.
Van Bruce Arant, Morrison, Colorado. The U.S. Supreme Court ruled on June 23rd this year, in the case of New York Rifle Association versus Bruin. In that ruling, they have now said that text, history, and tradition test is to be used and applied to all Second Amendment challenges going forward. So, this new standard for the Second Amendment jurisprudence governs all laws restricting the right to bear arms and invalidates any gun laws that fail to meet this standard. The new test supplants prior Second Amendment test, generally referred to as two-part test. Interest-balancing tests, means-end scrutiny, intermittent scrutiny, and strict scrutiny are no longer applicable. Three restrictions are still allowed. So, based on text, history, and tradition, where governmental practice has been open, widespread, and unchallenged, carrying a firearm into sensitive areas may be restricted. However, those areas are limited to polling places, legislative assemblies, like we have here, courthouses, and schools. However, in schools, it is students only. Citizens can also be restricted from carrying dangerous and unusual weapons that are not common. Reasonable licensing requirements for carrying a firearm may be imposed but shall not be unusually discretionary. So, these are the guidelines the Supreme Court has now laid upon us. Unfortunately, currently, in your municipal code, there are two items that are violating these restrictions. This is 9.32.050, open carry of firearms prohibited parks, community centers, and recreational facilities. This can be adjusted or fixed simply by removing the word "not" from Section C of that ordinance. Unfortunately, 9.70.070 has to be completely eliminated. There are also two that are questionable, 9.70.050 and 9.32.360, in order to conform to this new U.S. Supreme Court ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think it's Ms. Kringer. I said that wrong. And then, I have Mr. Scheller, Everett Street. And then, we'll just go there. Good evening.
It's Pam. Good evening.
Pam, good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Pam. My family and I have lived in Lakewood for the past seven years, and then now are happy to call it our home. My husband and I are formerly from Wisconsin, where gun ownership for deer and grouse and duck hunting are as common and accepted a part of life as beer, cheese, and the Packers. Gun safety is taught early on and is highly respected, but there are still tragic accidents and events that happen. In the fall of 1987, just after my friends and I graduated high school, a dear friend of mine named Mark, only 18 at the time, took his own life with a gun in his bedroom in his parents' house. A life that had barely begun was taken much too soon from a rash act with a gun. Guns work. They're effective at killing. And suicide by gun and its broad impacts on our community is important enough to talk about tonight, but I am not here just for that issue alone. I'm here tonight to talk for all the people, all of us in this room, affected by the mass shootings that now occur regularly. You can barely digest the significance of one by the time the next one occurs. They happen everywhere, to all ages, all socioeconomic backgrounds, and all different groups of people. There's too many to list. And just to remind you all of a few that are not even here in Colorado, which you probably know very well: Sandy Hook Elementary, 28 dead; Oak Creek, Wisconsin, at the Sikh Temple, seven dead; Crandon, Wisconsin, homecoming party, seven dead; five young police officers with a legally approved gun; Fort Hood, Texas, 14 dead; Orlando, Florida, night cub, 50 dead; Las Vegas, 61 dead; Sutherland Springs, Texas, Baptist Church, 27 dead; Parkland High School, 17 dead; Pittsburgh Synagogue, 11 dead; Buffalo Grocery Store, 10 dead, and the list goes on and on and on and on. While I am not an expert on the law, not an expert on constitutional rights, I do not believe there is a magic potion or one legal remedy to eliminate gun violence. It takes a broad effort, many layers of prevention, smart management of a problem to reduce the impact. I was raised to believe that when you see a problem, you see something that's broken. You don't pass blame. You don't do nothing. It's unacceptable, unthinkable. Rather, you take informed, strategic action to try and fix the problem. The five ordinances that are presented tonight for consideration from MDA to reduce gun violence in our community for all of us are each, in their own way, part of an informed, thoughtful, and common sense effort. It is not overly burdensome to anyone, but rather helpful, respectful to all of us who call Lakewood our home. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. So, Charles Schuler, Schuler, and then, Jofar, is that accurate? Jofar, on Virginia Drive, and Nicholas Kane, and then Dan McCabe. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Charles Schuler. I'm a Lakewood resident, have been for, before Lakewood. The regulations that continue to show up trying to regulate guns when they are not the problem, we all know the problem, it's people. It's our culture has changed over the years, and yes, we need some type of controls, but the culture is what is killing people, not the guns. They access the guns. At 11 years old, I was able to walk into a hardware store and buy my first gun. I found that I had a responsibility that I hadn't had before, and that is to control it. I continue to have a few weapons, and they are for my own personal safety. I continue to endorse people to have them for their own personal safety. Regulations are not the answer. Case in point, what's the worst school disaster ever? It is Bath, Michigan, where 43 people were killed in a school, not by guns, by dynamite. So, this is nothing new. It is only more prevalent because we are of a larger population. Regulations will not do it. It is the culture, the culture. Look what we teach children in school. Look what we teach children on television. Look at the comedies, the cartoons, as they used to be called. I don't know what they call them now, but they're certainly not cartoons. What are we teaching our children? That's where we start. Then, we work with the judicial system to be their ones who execute their job correctly. I thank you.
Great, thank you. So, Jofar, is that correct?
Jafer.
All right, good evening, welcome. And then, Nicholas Kane, Dan McCabe, Paul Cherry, and Aaron Kenworthy.
Peace be with you. My name is Jafer Partone. I'm here tonight because our lovely, demanding moms want to ask you to violate my rights even further. You know, they are, for quite a while, they have gotten very good at expressing their pain and suffering at the hands of firearms, but they weren't my firearms, and they weren't me. I really didn't get involved with any of this stuff until when I was, a few years ago, arrested for simply exercising a right. That's what opened my eyes to the fact that this, you know, Second Amendment that we claim to have is really just words on a piece of paper, and legislatures all over the place are passing laws that then have to go through the courts in order to be repealed or be found unconstitutional. Some people who came ahead of me did a good job of talking about this past summer and the new Supreme Court rulings, which basically takes the air out of all of these gun regulations. There's a lot of challenges in court currently that are being overturned or sent back to lower courts because this new decision by SCOTUS basically foments what we have known for a while, that any restriction on my ability to defend myself is unconstitutional. It's a violation of my right. Safe storage laws, like one of the ladies before me talked about, a few moments. It takes a few moments to put the ammo together, to put the, you know, to gain access to the firearm. Those are precious moments that I need to be able to defend myself if somebody wants to attack me. I live in Aurora, and crime has increased ridiculously. Ever since these demanding moms have been getting what they want with our supermajority legislature, crime has risen, violence has risen. Everything that they promised us has not come to pass. So, I'm at a loss of how insane do they have to be to think that more of the same flawed legislation is going to have any different effect? You know, I can understand the pain and suffering, but I'm not responsible for their pain and suffering. And for them to come here and ask you to pass legislation to criminalize me for defending myself and my loved ones is unconscionable. I'm very upset, and I'm really here just to rebuke them and to let you know that they're not the only voice in town. That's basically all I have to say. I appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Kane? Mr. McCabe, Mr. Cherry, and Ms. Kenworthy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I appreciate you giving me three minutes tonight. I feel like I'm the bad guy in the room because I'm not here on the gun issue. I'm a business owner on Kipling Street. I'm here on probably behalf of 200 Lakewood residents who are without water tonight because the Colorado Civil Infrastructure Incorporated contractor to the city of Lakewood, who is working on the sewer lines and the water lines, has been in our neighborhood for approximately six months. There have been numerous delays. I wanted to make sure that you're aware of these problems that we're experiencing in, I believe it's Ward Three, at the area of, south of Florida, and between Kendall, Jay, and Ingalls Street. I'm on Iowa, West Iowa Boulevard, and it's an intermittent process where they are complaining that the water coming from the Denver Water District has bacterial contamination, and that's the reason for the delays. So, I'm not sure if the City Council or my representative, not to point fingers, is even aware of this situation, but that's the important thing, is that I wanted to bring it to the City Council's attention. We've been very patient with the contractor. We know, especially in Colorado, where you have the Four Seasons, you have snowbound streets, you have a hot blacktop in the summertime, and it's resulting in all kinds of problems for the contractor, no doubt. However, when the water went out this evening at 4:00 p.m. with no warning, normally they'll put a note on your door, water's going to be out for eight hours or whatever. We can live with that as long as we have some warning. But we want to make sure that the city of Lakewood is aware that this subcontractor is acting, well, I don't want to say they're acting, let me put it this way, they're taking what we consider to be an unreasonable delay just to replace some of the pipes. Now, I've been told the infrastructure throughout metropolitan Denver is falling apart, not just Lakewood. It's a problem that after 50 years, when all the piping was installed 50-plus years ago, it's now falling apart. So, I'm not here to blame this contractor. I feel for them, but I just want to make sure the city is aware of what residents throughout the area, Florida, Ingalls, Kendall, and Iowa are going through. What concerned me was the Denver Water Inspector, who I talked to several months ago at the same site, said that the main problem he was experiencing was bacterial contamination in the main line that's provided by Denver Water. I don't know if the city of Lakewood is aware of that. It's kind of scary. We've had some people that have become ill, but we can't link it directly to that without further testing. So, hopefully, the inspectors are on top of that, and I believe that's it, except that there are some traffic hazards that this contractor produces as far as his equipment being out in the middle of the street without proper barricades. We've notified Lakewood PD. They've been very responsive and very helpful, and I thank you for your time. I just want to make sure the City Council was aware of this unusual situation.
Great. Thank you for coming out. We'll get your information. Ms. Hodson, we'll get that, and we'll get somebody with you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Mr. McCabe? Mr. Cherry, Ms. Kenworthy, and then, Ms. Roosevelt. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, I need to tell you where I sit before I tell you where I stand. This is an issue that is near and dear to my heart for a couple of reasons. Number one, I've been an attorney for 49 years. In that, I'm sorry, oh. In that capacity, I've done everything from being a city attorney, being a prosecutor, being a defense counsel, and spent eight years conducting court and jury criminal trials. In that capacity, I've represented a multiple murderer, killed seven women, did not use a gun. So, I'm pretty familiar with the topic, and I've seen a lot of attempts to regulate a lot of issues, written a few of those ordinances myself. There's some good ideas, I'm not going to try to repeat those. There's some good arguments, I'm not going to try to repeat those, but a couple that struck near and dear to me. As a former Marine Corps captain, I would have a very difficult time leading the young men that I had under my command, who were less than 21 years of age, who the government thought were fit to operate everything from fully automatic weapons to mortars. And now, you want to tell them they can't even purchase a gun for any purpose whatsoever. Number two, one thing I learned in my experience is you can pass all the laws you want, but the nature of a criminal is, they don't follow them. Number three, if you don't believe me, look at the statistics from Chicago or Philadelphia or New York City. New Orleans, some of the most restrictive gun control legislation hasn't worked. The statistics show that concealed carry permit holders commit fewer crimes than certified police officers. You're talking about people you're going to restrict who are the safest of the safe, and yet, certain people want to restrict them. As I look at this entire problem, I notice one thing that has taken place, and that's in the recent past, as you can tell by the grain in my hair, I've been around a while, we've seen an increase in gun violence. Simultaneously, contemporaneously with that, we've seen a decrease in mental health care. People who I have committed People who I have committed and probably would commit today are not even being dealt with in the mental health community. And I think if there is a problem, right there is where we should start. I think rather than attempting to regulate those people who follow the rules and who follow the laws, that you should look very seriously. I realize this is a state problem more than it's a local problem, but you would simply add to it by passing these regulations, which I do not believe would accomplish anything. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Cherry? Ms. Kenworthy? Ms. Roosevelt? Ms. Bohm? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am a resident, and I work in Lakewood as well. I didn't grow up around guns. There was some violence that hit close to home years ago in my life, and I decided to go purchase a gun, and I decided to become trained in being proficient with that weapon. Decided to get my concealed carry permit, and I carry that gun with me everywhere I'm illegally allowed to. It never occurred to me to infringe on the rights of my fellow Americans when I saw an uptick in violence around me. It occurred to me to take responsibility for myself. A few years ago, during the pandemic, I saw much more violence, like millions and millions of other Americans in this country, and decided to quit my job and took a job at a gun store so that I could start to help people in that community, because there was millions of new gun owners coming, not around the country, thousands and thousands just into our store alone. These were people that were scared of what was happening around them, and their natural inclination, again, was not to infringe on other people's rights, but to learn how to protect themselves. And I'm proud to be a part of that. The store that I work at, that I'm here to speak on behalf of tonight, has been in Lakewood for 10 years. They have contributed over $350,000 in that 10 years in Lakewood City sales tax. Just in the last, just since 2020, that number is almost $230,000. That money will go away if the proposed ordinances are passed. The waiting period forces us to store weapons. We went through this during the pandemic. The wait times at the Carole Bureau of Investigations was so long that people had to wait six to seven days to get their firearms. It almost caused us to go out of business at that time. You have to store all those firearms. Meanwhile, bringing in new inventory, we can't just expand, we don't have the option. Secondly, if we were forced to do that in Lakewood, why would anybody buy a gun in Lakewood? They would go to Denver, they would go to any of the surrounding cities, which would force us to move all of those tax dollars out of Lakewood. As a responsible gun owner, they're proposing that we cannot carry our firearms in the local grocery store and many other places. That was an attempt in New York to restrict those rights as well. Again, after Rowan, federal court shot that down, the sensitive places. So all of these measures would not help to end the gun violence, and it would force me to consider moving out of the city of Lakewood, and I would certainly not be able to shop and support businesses in Lakewood because I wouldn't be allowed to execute or exercise my rights there. Lastly, federally, they just imposed a up-to-10-day waiting period for all persons under 21 to purchase firearms, so that would kind of be a moot point for that category as well. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kenworthy? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kenworthy, and I'm a mom living in Ward Five. I'd like to express my gratitude this evening to our councilors and public servants for their extended time. Being willing to run and serve in local government takes dedication, patience, and a dash of audacity. I chose to bring my family, a kindergartner, and a fifth grader to the proceedings this evening to witness the work that goes into living and serving in a community, and it's bedtime, and they had to go home. What you are being asked to consider, these five ordinances, are similar to those passed by neighboring municipalities. It's not an unreasonable ask. Passing these ordinances won't require even one dash of your audacity. This should be an easy task compared to the zoning and budget issues that you regularly face and still have to face this evening on your agenda. Solutions to complex problems require answers that are not binary either-or, but multi-layered both-and. And so these ordinances are one measure of many that can be taken. Regulation and access to health care and access to resources for people who are under-resourced. It's not just one solution. I and my family support these ordinances fully and hope that you will consider and pass these ordinances to secure a safe community for my children and their friends and our neighbors. You have my respect and my encouragement. I'm thankful for those here and at home, and for parents who are unable to make it tonight because they're in the business of parenting. Your participation for everybody here is valuable and necessary for our elected officials to execute the duties of their elected offices in an informed manner. Where you are sitting, councilors, you have the opportunity to potentially reduce gun violence with your support of these ordinances. Please do what you can from where you are sitting. Thank you for your time and your service.
Great, thank you. Bring the kids back anytime. Ms. Roosevelt? Ms. Bohm? And Mr. Acevedo?
Hello, hello, councilmembers. My name is Ellen Roosevelt. I live with my husband, a native Coloradan, and two young daughters in the Applewood community of Lakewood. I won't go on and on with all the reasons we love living here, but at the top of the list are those mountains we all love and a set of very active, very helpful grandparents to our two kids. In fact, the only thing that ever gets us actively discussing leaving Colorado is to live in a state with a lower incidence of gun violence. I think about, I fear, gun violence when I take my daughters to the grocery store with me, when I drop my oldest, Frances, off at pre-K, when I consider taking them to parade or another public gathering, and sadly, when I weigh the pros and cons of enrolling them in their neighborhood elementary school conveniently right down the street or homeschooling, something I'd never considered before. So in 2022, you could say this fear has been quite constant. I'm here tonight to beg for your support in considering the gun violence prevention ordinances that Moms Demand Action has outlined tonight. I'd like to note here that I am a gun owner myself in full support of these ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Bohm? Mr. Acevedo? Then Mr. Powers? Yes. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Lisa Bame, and I live in Ward One. I grew up here and moved back with my partner and young son. Public speaking makes me ill.
You're okay.
So I am just going to read a little bit from a Facebook conversation between my cousin, who is a member of the NRA, has a gun with him, as far as I know, as all times that he can. And we got into a little discussion, and my response to him was this. I want to say that neither I nor any of the many people I know in the gun violence prevention movement are trying to ban guns. Generally, we want to expand background checks to keep guns out of the hands of people with criminal records, people with certain mental illnesses, people on the no-fly list, and people who have been convicted of domestic violence. We also like to ban high-capacity magazines, which are designed to shoot the iPhone, to shoot so many bullets so quickly that they don't have use for self-protection, hunting, or target practice. I know that people will still be able to commit crimes with guns, but doing what we can to lessen gun violence is all that we can do, just as we pass seatbelt laws and speed limit laws and require driver's licenses, not expecting to stop traffic deaths, but to lessen them. So if we can regulate cars, I think we could regulate guns. I'm representing my partner, who's also part of Moms Demand Action, but he's at home with our son, and my mother, who is home with, at her home, and her grandson lives in Lakewood. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Please support these ordinances.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Acevedo, Mr. Powers, Mr. Klopp. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Mario Acevedo. I live in Denver. Some of my advice is to look at what Denver's doing and do the exact opposite, because it's not working. All right, thank you for this opportunity to voice my opposition against more gun control. I am a father, a grandfather, a military veteran, and I've lived in Colorado for 30 years. Believe it or not, Moms Demand Action and I share a common goal in that we all want to live without fear of violence. The difference is, I want policies and laws that actually work. I unfortunately know more about this subject than I care to. I've had two people close to me get killed with guns, so I don't need to be lectured to about such trauma. We're told that Moms Demand Action is proposing effective, evidence-based policies. Let's look at the evidence. This year marks a decade of Colorado common sense gun control lobbied for by Moms Demand Action. In 2013, Colorado recorded 106 firearm homicides. Last year, the state recorded 274 firearm homicides. By any measure, this policy on reducing gun violence has been a disaster. But rather than admit reality, Moms Demand Action is asking you to double down on what's not working. They want you to enact more new gun laws. Let's take a look at where such gun laws are already in effect. This is a printout from the Giffords Law Center, where they give California their highest rating for strict gun laws, just despite that California has the most dangerous cities in America, infamous for gun violence, like San Bernardino, Oakland, Stockton, Sacramento. Listen to what Moms Demand Action is advocating, that you model Lakewood's public safety policy and what they have in Oakland, California. How do you think that's going to turn out? Why aren't these laws working? Ask your police and senior attorney what's causing violent crime, and they'll tell you: gangs, drug trafficking, youth violence, and domestic violence aggravated by drugs and alcohol. You are well aware of the link between fentanyl and violent crime. Notice that none of the proposals offered by Moms Demand Action addresses gangs or drugs. We recently had another mass shooting, and it fits a two-familiar pattern. The shooter suffered severe mental issues and had prior criminal contact with the police, yet nothing was done to prevent the massacre, much like the tattoo parlor shooter whose threats were communicated to the city of Denver and ignored. That shooter was stopped by Lakewood Police Officer Ashley Ferris. Why was Moms Demand Action silent about that failure to protect the public? Moms Demand Action is based in New York City, which is plagued with violent crime and murder, where women are routinely shot, stabbed, bludgeoned, and pushed on the subway tracks. Moms Demand Action can't even clean up their own front yard, and yet they come here with solutions. I have homework for you. Moms Demand Action is going to follow up, and I urge you to ask them this question. What's the secret sauce in your proposals for them to work here in Lakewood when they failed in Baltimore, in Chicago, in Washington, D.C., in Sacramento, in Seattle? What's going to make them work this time? And for Moms Demand Action, if you really want to stop gun violence, ask the Lakewood Police, the Denver Police, and the Aurora Police for the addresses of gang members and drug dealers, and go to those addresses and have them turn in their guns, and then report back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Powers, Mr. Klopp, Mr. Price, Mr. Todd.
Mayor Paul, City Council, thank you for the time. Thank you for staying late tonight. I apologize, I'm a terrible public speaker, so I'm going to be nervous. I've been a Lakewood resident for over 20 years. I've been a Lakewood business owner for over 20 years, and I've also had a Jefferson County concealed weapons permit for almost 20 years. Just wanted to tell you where I'm standing before I proceed into anything else. I'm not really going to give you any education points or anything like that. I'm just going to tell you that over the past 10 years, I've had approximately 400 hours of instructor-driven training over multiple different types of weapon systems, handguns, rifles, shotguns. These laws are impacting me. They're not impacting the criminals. I'm going to end up paying more taxes when you defend these lawsuits. They're going to come, and I'm going to be the one that's going to try to figure out where I fit in the patchwork. So you're going to pass some laws here, you're going to pass some laws in Nevada, they're going to pass some laws in Denver. Where am I going to be legal to go with them? It's making my life difficult, is what I'm basically saying, as a Lakewood resident. And I don't think any of these laws are going to impact the people that are inclined to break the laws. So I don't think the proposed ordinance should be taken up by my hometown of Lakewood, Colorado. I do believe they should have been a state issue, and the only reason we're here is because they remove state preemption, we all know that. So unfortunately, that happened, and I would just urge you not to take up any more laws in Lakewood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Klopp, Price, Todd, and then Ms. Poston. No, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, City Councilors and Mayor. My name is Ross Clef. I was the 2022 Libertarian candidate for U.S. Congress for this district. I am a city of Lakewood resident and have been since 1998. Today, I'd like to discuss several issues with a recently requested proposal to increase the minimum age for possession and purchase of a rifle or shotgun from 18 to 21. 18- to 21-year-old young adults are enrolled in every military in the world and have been on the front lines of every major war the U.S. has fought, including Revolutionary War of 1812, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Young adults are easily capable of safely operating firearms with training. The proposed confiscation of legally purchased firearms will take away the following from young adults in our community. It'll take away the right for young adults to hunt for food. This could easily result in increased homelessness and poverty for young adults, since we're experiencing record-high food prices and an extreme housing crisis. It'll take away one of the more effective self-defense methods for young adults. Young adult, military, National Guard, Army Reserve members, and vets will have no easy way to practice or train with firearms when they are off duty, substantially lowering military readiness. It also takes away the right for young adults to be involved in gun sport competitions like single-action shooting or other similar shooting sport competitions. And last but not least, it takes away firearms from young adults without compensation, violating the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, and also confiscating valuable goods that young adults can use to pay for things like college, trade schools, and other sorts of training. The U.S. Constitution applies to everybody, including 18- to 21-year-old young adults. We need to stop pretending like it doesn't. Thank you for your attention in this very important matter.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Mr. Todd, Ms. Poston, Mr. Hendrickson? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Wayne Price. I'm the owner of The Gun Room. I purchased the business nine months ago, and it's been in business in Lakewood since 1994. Before you consider gun control issues, I ask that you visit a gun store to learn how transactions currently work and the current laws that are already on the books. I, as well as other gun shop owners, I'm sure, would love the opportunity to answer direct questions, help you understand how serious we take the honor of selling guns. No gun store owner wants to be the one on the news, being the shop that sold a gun to someone who did bad things. Did you know that our staff is trained to watch for straw purchases when someone tries to buy a gun for someone else? These are shut down on somewhat of a regular basis. You can tell when someone wants to buy a gun and knows nothing about it. We are also trained to watch a person's demeanor. If they are nervous, if they seem emotional, we shut these sales down. We know these people aren't in the right mindset. Did you know that every gun leaves a shop with a lock and a gun safety pamphlet printed by the ATF? This is the current law, and this pamphlet talks about proper gun storage. Did you know that background checks for anyone under 21 years old are automatically delayed? This is so that mental health background information can be obtained, and the approval won't come back until they hear from all the municipalities that they want to talk to. and the approval won't come back until they hear from all the municipalities that they want to talk to. This could be up to 10 days. Also, if you're under 21, you can only buy long guns, not handguns. This is the current federal law. Also, if the City of Lakewood sets a waiting period and the cities and counties around us don't, that puts our businesses in Lakewood at very much a disadvantage. People will go where there are no waits to buy guns. Also, a previous speaker mentioned that someone flying Colorado from Florida to buy a gun. To clarify, as an FFL, Federal License Dealer, we are required to follow the laws of the state of residence of the buyer. Out-of-state residents can only buy long guns, not handguns. And if any of these proposed regulations would actually save lives, I could get behind it and have a conversation with someone, even though it would affect my business. But these laws will not save lives. But thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Todd, Ms. Poston, Mr. Hendrickson, Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Zandovich? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, and I apologize that we are even here discussing this. We shouldn't be. We should be talking about great businesses in the community, water issues. Those are the things that City Council should be talking about. Unfortunately, Moms Demand is proposing five ordinances that I strongly oppose, and I just want to give you a background of who I am. My name's Evan Todd. I'm a born native, Colorado native. I've lived in Lakewood for 21 years, and I'm the survivor, one of the survivors of the Columbine massacre. I incurred gunshot wounds, I spoke to the killers directly, and since that time, I've looked into the things that cause these incidents and the things that can prevent them. And I look at these five ordinances and the laws that we've had since 2013 that Moms Demand backed, and all they did was disarm good people. Another one of them talked about the mass shootings at schools. Well, there's a common thread. These are in gun-free zones where people aren't able to defend themselves. The schools are left unprotected, and these five ordinances are a gift to criminals. It will be a gun-free zone step by step in Lakewood if we go down this path. Disarming good people, disarming people who want to protect their lives and their families, is not the way to a safe community. Other people pointed out San Francisco, LA, Compton, Chicago, you name it, all these places that have more and more gun control. Good people are sitting there defenseless because it empowers criminals. So, I urge you to oppose these, all five of these ordinances, and any others that this organization comes up. I understand that many of these people have horrific stories, and my heart breaks for them because I understand their pain. But there is something else that is very despicable about the Moms Demand organization. It is funded by billionaires. You can tell they all have the same talking points. And they push this agenda, and it's not just about the Second Amendment. It is an attack on the American Constitution and our way of government. I am innocent until proven guilty. I shouldn't be held accountable for any of the crimes that they have either suffered themselves or their family members. These type of things are not just a Second Amendment issue. They're a freedom issue, they're a rule of law issue. And it goes, it's so despicable that they do this. And I just want to, just lastly, thank you and apologize that you even have to deal with these issues because it's not the thing that should be at a City Council. So, thank you.
Thanks for sharing your story. Ms. Poston, Mr. Hendrickson, Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Zandovich. If you haven't signed up, please sign up, then we're going to move over to the online.
My name is Joan Poston, and I am a member, resident of unincorporated Jefferson County. I've been here before, and you know what I'm about. I want to thank the women who have come here and are demanding action because I have been demanding action here since 7/11 of this year. And I am now here to give you a transparency of what is happening with me. Dear Ms. Poston, this is a reference to your GSA Freedom of Information Act request. I am writing to get information. This is my request that I made. I am writing to get information about a property, Denver Federal Center Lot Number GSA R2035. I believe that there is a environmental restriction on this property. I request any communications between GSA and the EPA regarding this property and parcel of land. I am requesting any communications between the GSA, any employee of the GSA with the Lakewood Mayor, Adam Paul, West Metro Housing Solutions, and any congressman and the HHS leader of Ben Carson since January 1, 2006. I started this, down this road with the FOIA's in August. I have been referred, I have been glasslighted, and I am still at this. The reason that they sent me this email is because they want to renegotiate my freedom of information. I'm here because I believe in transparency. These people are wanting to delay my FOIA until on or before January 5, 2023. I am not afraid. I want you to know I'm not afraid of guns, I'm not afraid of viruses, and I'm not afraid of the government who wants to shut down information to me. I need you to know that this property that is contaminated will kill more children than any gun violence there is. I represent, we the women, and there are 12 of us, and none of them are here, except one friend of mine, who, they are home, they are home with second jobs, they are home taking care of children, and they all believe that they want to have the right to protect themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson, Mr. Hagerty, if you want to start making your way down. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Lakewood City Council. Thank you for giving me this time. My name is Merle Hendrickson. I'm a resident of Arvada, but I come to Lakewood regularly. I'm a member of the Jefferson County Libertarians, and we have our meetings here in Lakewood. One thing that the group proposing these gun legislation says is they're in support of the Second Amendment, but their proposed ordinances will basically make guns illegal in Lakewood. And why I say that is because they are proposing that most, if not all, public spaces, guns would be illegal. So, if that's the case, then basically, any good, law-abiding citizen wouldn't want to own a gun if they live in Lakewood or come to Lakewood because it would basically mean, basically, be illegal to have a gun. And another thing is, the place with the most gun restrictions in America is Chicago, and they have the most murders with guns in the nation. On the other hand, where I used to live in Lubbock, Texas, had very lax gun regulations, there's never been a mass shooting. And so, the idea that more gun legislation will reduce gun violence, it's actually the opposite. And these progressives say that they're for separation of church and state, but one of the places that they're proposing that you not be allowed to carry guns is churches. So, and that would be the government imposing their will upon churches. So, they're actually being disingenuous when they say they're for separation of church and state, but they're proposing these laws when they clearly do not believe in that. So, they're lying. And I personally go to the second-largest church in Arvada, and I know that a lot of the people that go to that church, part of the reason they feel safe is because we have volunteer security that carry guns to help keep us safe. My pastor was part of the lawsuit against Governor Polis, a class-section lawsuit, challenging COVID restrictions, and there are a lot of people that are very angry with him about that, and he is at very much danger if he can't be protected with people with guns. And I think a lot of the churches in Lakewood would also be at serious danger and possibly shut down if these ordinances come into place. And I thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Zandovich, and then Mr. Dotson and Mr. Klopki, then we'll go to online.
I'm Sean Hagerty. I grew up two blocks south of Casabonita. I'm very familiar with the county and the city. I just want to tell you that there are two separate areas. First of all, Ms. Poston's referring to 59 acres of the Federal Center. So, I think a number of people here may not be aware of the issues there. If you want to find out more about that, check with the few surviving members that still know about the Remington's Arm Factory, the nuclear power plant that's there that generates low-level radiation, and the fact that it has not been cleaned up. With regard to the gun issue, very simply, if you want to make a change, I grew up, like I say, two blocks south of Casabonita. I currently live at about 14th and Balsam. There's been a significant increase in gun shots in my area, in murders, and in other criminal actions involving guns. I'm very concerned about safety issues. If we want to deal with it, I suggest you focus on the gangs. You focus on the actual enforcement of the existing laws. What has been proposed here will do nothing to impact any of that. Restricting gun ownership between the 18- and 21-year-old group won't have an impact. The gang owners have kids running around 13, 14-years of age because, guess what? They get treated differently under juvenile law than adult law. So, my concern for the focus of your attentions here, Councilman Mayor Adam Paul, is to take a look at something that will make an actual difference, and it's not merely an attempt to restrict the rights of the people that are following the law. You've heard more than adequate evidence that there are a lot of people that are very responsible gun owners and that have protections primary on their minds. The situation was referred to the church here a few years ago. We had a seminary that was attacked. That driver, that killer, happened to go down to Colorado Springs, and he attempted to convert that church into a mass-killing situation. It was their church security, armed, which this set of regulations would impact. They would have been defenseless. When you create gun-free zones, you create targets on those areas. There were a theater shooting, Columbine. I dealt with the dispatcher that had her dad bleed out, the teacher at Columbine. You listen to Evan. His concern is very real and is very focused. Every female and every male, like myself, getting older, that's concerned about protecting themselves from the gangs that we have here in Lakewood right now should be concerned because, guess what? Your best defense against them is going to be trained and to be armed. An armed society is a polite society, and it doesn't allow what's going on here. When you look at the urban violence, it's the urban centers with concentration with gangs. It's not the rural areas. I grew up, six and seven-years-old, hunting out in western Kansas. I presented gun safety programs to my junior high here in Jefferson County. Couldn't do that today. And guess what? We didn't have those issues because the culture has changed. It is more dangerous, and you have to protect yourself. The police, for all they can do, is limited simply because they can only come and identify the body after you're gone. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Michael? Good evening. Then I have Don Dotson and Mark Klopki, and that exhausts my list of folks in chambers. And I'll go to the online. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Paul, and the rest of the council for allowing me to speak. My name is Michael Zandlovich. I live in Ward 4. I do apologize in advance for the rather unstructured nature of my comments here. I have a five-month-old daughter, so it makes it hard to sit down and get my notes together. You've heard a lot of testimony about Second Amendment, various SCOTUS rulings, particularly Bruin, which has really drastically changed the landscape of what is permissible. You know, Moms Demand Action here has mentioned that they are not focusing on current laws that are being legislated. That being said, numerous cases across the country, specifically regarding carry and safe zones, have been struck down by federal courts. Just because it has not been legislated yet in Colorado, don't think it, do not think it will not be. There are many, there are many groups out there that are chomping at the bit, and the precedent is high. Secondly, the entire notion of banning concealed carry in certain locations. One point I want to make is I don't think it's been stated that when SB 256 was passed, the law specifically stated that local municipalities could only ban carry in locations directly under their control. So, this banning of weapons in stores and churches and businesses, that was not even granted under 256. Furthermore, parks in other locations, like I mentioned, have been already struck down in numerous states by federal courts. Lastly, you know, I want to say, just because you pass a law does not mean it's a good idea or it will accomplish a purpose. Passing a law, just to pass a law, is not sensible. Like others have mentioned, if we have 10-day restrictions here in Lakewood, even if all of Jeffco passes them, it won't take any effort for someone to drive to Douglas County, Weld County, anywhere, Park County, any one of the neighboring counties. These are frankly state issues. Furthermore, you know, concealed carry, you know, is concealed for a purpose. If you, for a reason, if you ban concealed carry, the people that are actually of harm, they won't care about concealed carry bans. And as has been noted, concealed carry holders are the most law-abiding citizens in the community. So, by restricting a group of people who you had no issues with in any location is just not sensible policy. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dotson, Mr. Klopki, and then Ms. Brewer, did you sign up as well? Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I don't want to take too much of your time tonight because I know it's going long already. I'm not going to tell you about horrific crimes that were stopped by armed citizens. You probably know of that, you've heard of others. I'm not going to go through statistics about how concealed carry owners are six times less likely to commit crime than policemen. And I'm not going to go into how suicides touch me or my family. It's not relevant. I will suggest that you consider that you've already been told tonight that you'll be facing lawsuits if these ordinances are passed, and you're well aware that these and far greater restrictions have taken place in major cities to no effect. have taken place in major cities to no effect. What I am going to suggest tonight is something that the city of Longmont has done. And that is, they have decided, and I think wisely, to put off any consideration of new gun ordinances until after the state legislature has gone through the 2023 session. Obviously, many of those legislators have said they're going to pass laws. And if those laws are passed, they will make these ordinances either unnecessary or irrelevant, saving you a lot of time, a lot of controversy, and hopefully a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kloski, then Ms. Brewer. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Mark Kloski. I live in Denver, but I do a fair amount of business as a carpenter, custom woodworker here in Lakewood, other municipalities around the area, so I'm here pretty regular. Came here, wasn't really sure what I was going to speak, which points. I'd say that a couple of things I do want to maybe clean up, some stuff that was maybe misleading or whatever. First thing I want to address is, someone made the comment that the NRA has fought gun-buying restrictions for felons. That's garbage. They did at one point in their history, right after slavery was over, and they fought for blacks to be allowed to be able to purchase firearms, own firearms, to resist Jim Crow laws. Blacks were treated just like felons. Most of them were jailed, charged with things, and jailed just so they could put that on their records, so they could take their rights away from them. They wanted to keep them suppressed, lower-class population. So they did then. Since then, NRA has actually supported gun-buying restrictions, gun-ownership restrictions for all felons, most criminals, and they've actually fought for maximum penalties, mandatory maximum penalties for felons. So I want to clean that up. There was a thing mentioned about mental health, and it brought up to me some stats I'd heard a couple of months ago. And I actually did some research on this, and the statistics hold true. So in 1955, here in the U.S., there was 340 beds available in mental health hospitals per 100,000 population. In 2017, there are 17 beds for 100,000 per capita for the U.S. population. That's like 5% of what you had in 1955. I know the need for mental health treatment has not dropped that much. There is one thing I did want to read, but time's running short, so I'm not going to, but I'll just surmise it. To take away guns from law-abiding citizens because criminals' actions and based whether they can carry or not based on criminals' actions leaves a lot to be desired. You're telling the law-abiding citizens that their behavior, their actions, their freedoms are based on the criminal's behavior. That doesn't work. It just doesn't work. It doesn't change anything. If anything, it makes the law-abiding easier targets for the criminals. They don't care about your laws. They're going to do what they're going to do. That's the very definition of being a criminal. It just doesn't work like that. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go online next. I have a couple of hands up if you wish to speak. Please go ahead and raise your hand with a star nine. Yep, Liz Brewer. Yep, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for letting me give a piece of my mind here. This is not regarding tonight's subject matter at this point, but it is in regard to you're all agreeing to your workshop next week for short-term rentals. Just an aside, about three years ago, Congresswoman, Councilwoman Barb Franks was gracious enough to head up this committee. At that time, there were identified as 350 short-term rentals in Lakewood. Took us by surprise because that's illegal, and yet we had people that came to council, some of you will recall, you were on council. They came to council and said, "We've bought these large houses, and this is what we want to do with them." And they came right, surprised a number of us that they would come to council knowing that they had done something illegal and bring it to council. Nothing was done at that point. So afterwards then, I remember not too many weeks ago, there was a gentleman from staff who spoke, and he said they had identified 150 at that time and felt that code enforcement would be able to handle that. I personally know code enforcement is busy. They are like a lot of people too. They too are understaffed. So I'm just wondering how it went from 350 identified to 150 right now. Also, when you're looking at this, I know at one time you spoke about how many could be on a block. So when you're really looking at it in person to see how many feet could actually be on a block in our neighborhood, that would be something we'd appreciate in our neighborhood for you to be looking at. Thank you all for your time, and again, thank you for doing this workshop. It's extremely important to a lot of us. I know there's people that use that as a rental. There's a number of us too who, though, our HOAs say, and that's why we bought into them, they're coveted areas. They should be, we should have control and not worry about that type of a situation. Anyway, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and go online, and I'll just reiterate, give us your name and address or name and ward. And at 30 seconds, I'll give you a ding, and then when your time's up. It looks like first up is Ms. Gonzalez.
Ward Four, Desiree Gonzalez. First, I wanted to go back to the deputy city manager talking about stats to Counselor Springsteen on gender, where he said, "All of that in reference to trans folks." That's transphobia, people. You kill people with words. The city itself has been abandoning my trans friends' jobs and bans you having no actual stats because they don't exist. One was hired only to have the offer rescinded because they didn't understand how the bathrooms work. They don't get jobs because you're literally ignorant. You say we're inclusive. We don't have one single gay bar. We don't have a pride flag up. We have never even had a pride. Only one counselor before today has ever even mentioned pride. Lakewood is 70% white Christian hypocrite. If focus on the family where a city, it would be Lakewood and Edgewater would be its church. Your God has churches that refuse to help the houseless. We have more parking spots to charge an electric vehicle than safe spots for parking spaces. If you don't want any more gay or trans folks, stop having kids. You're the ones making them. The pro-life crowd is for murderers, as is CCU, who has not denounced the shooting at Cub Q. If we're the holiest city, why are we so corrupt? Is that God's will? We're number one for illegal sex services, number one for human trafficking, number one for illegal gambling. That's all white people. You can't even try to blame it on people of color or the LGBT community. That's all you white Christians. This city is embarrassing. It's time we hired a city manager who isn't aligned with hate and terrorists if we want to be inclusive. Otherwise, quit the facade, get out your Klan hats, and take down the sign. In 1992, Colorado was labeled the hate state when it barred protected status for sexual orientation because there is no love like Christian hate. It's time for change. This will come to a head very soon. It won't be pretty. There's a revolution happening, so y'all better figure out which side you're on. The homophobic mayor who called me Desi the Lesi growing up? Or freedom for everybody? A life with no fear. No fear. That's what we're supposed to have. A life with no fear. Isn't that the real American dream? No fear. Your God breeds fear. The mayor's just one example.
Okay. Next up, we have, looks like it's Moto and Stylist. If you would like to give us your name and ward or name and address, we'll get you going, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for the display of my name. I thought when I signed in last month, having set up the software, that it would have identified me. My name is Michael Holowekki.
Thank you.
H-O-L-O-W-E-C-K-I. I hope there's people still in the forum that can hear me. I want to speak directly to any proposed legislation regarding gun control. And I want to speak directly to my own personal experience, how it relates to the lady in pink from Heller, "Education, education, education", and the gentleman in the green shirt, the lifelong Lakewood resident, who talked about the culture. I myself am personally privy to several people who died by violent conduct. Some of it could have been preventable, others not so much. And some should have been under the radar the whole time. I want to say that as my own self, I could probably go do a background check today, and if due diligence hasn't been done in the year since 1981, when I became a convicted felon, unable to buy firearms or possess them. I was allowed in the state of California after a 10-day waiting period to purchase two weapons, a shotgun and a handgun. And when I learned as a resident of Lakewood from watching a hearing with Trey Gowdy that if you had a court martial of any kind, you're a felon and you can't own weapons, I surrendered them immediately. I want to speak to a couple of instances that I experienced around about June, July, August, and September of 2020. Two young men shot and killed in the Walmart parking lot at Wadsworth and Colfax. A pit bull shot dead right on Teller Street between 12th and the White Route, causing my neighbor to sell his home in fear and immediately move away. A woman shot at a Safeway a mile away from my home and died in a murder. Two police-involved shootings at the hotels directly across the street from the Safeway. I myself experienced senseless and inappropriate use of firearms in the commission of a crime. On July 26th, arriving home from Ohio, I was accosted by a Michael Sanchez who approached me with a gun in his seatbelt. Mr. Sanchez was found guilty at trial and of the many charges brought against him. He was convicted in addition to driving legal ability impaired to misdemeanor two, weapon prohibited use, drunk with a gun, and misdemeanor three menacing.
If you could wrap up your comments, please. Your time is up.
Already? I've only been speaking for a minute.
We appreciate that, but your time is up.
I have three minutes to speak. Are you going to cut me off? I'm not even finished. That's just one incident. I have another one.
No, we certainly, we gave you your three minutes, sir. We appreciate it.
Am I at three minutes?
Yes, sir.
I'm not at three minutes.
But I appreciate it. Thank you for calling in.
I certainly can't be at three minutes.
All right. So I'm going to close public comment barring any other comments or hands up. And just would certainly like to thank everybody for taking the time to come out and come before us tonight and give your public testimony and participate in your local government, which is super important. Looks like Mr. Netzer left already, and we certainly understand the problem in the Addenbrook area with all the schools and a frustrating issue with our partners in Denver not being able to open a gate. So we'll certainly continue to try to work that out. Maybe Counselor Abel can do some arm twisting with an old colleague on the Denver side. There was a comment about the New York ruling, and that's something our city attorney's office is certainly engaged with, and we'll bring that back to council once they've fully examined that. I believe that, Ms. Hodson, you were able to get our information to our gentleman on the water issue. And as we move forward, you know, you certainly have your availability to talk to your city council and come to us with your concerns and your comments and your suggestions. So with that, we're going to take a break. It's 9:01, and I know we have some folks here. We're going to get right back to this consent agenda. We should go pretty quick. But we're going to take a recess. It's 9:01 right now. We'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the Lakewood City Council Hybrid Regular Council Meeting on November 28th, 2022 at 9:17 PM. We're going to go ahead and continue. What I would like to do is ask for a motion to move Ordinance 2022-24 to the Consent Agenda. And just to reiterate, that is the Item 17, which will be presented for second reading on the 12th pertaining to the two proposals that council sent forward for redistricting. So, Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul.
Oh, you muted. You went mute.
Sorry, technical difficulties.
There you go.
Sorry, technical difficulties. I move for Ordinance 2022-24 be moved to the Consent Agenda, the topic being the municipal ward boundaries.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counselor Springsteen?
Yes, I studied the Option 1 and 3 we were given October 24th and the one we were given today, and they're entirely different, at least Option 3 is. So, I don't think that we can make this motion at this time, as that issue needs to be resolved. We were told we had two options to choose from. I was particularly interested because it affects Ward 3, and Option 3 has entirely changed. So, I would object to this motion.
Okay. Objection noted for clarification. Ms. Hodson? Yep, I'm just, would you like to quarterback that question?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Counselor Springsteen, can you give a little more information about what those differences are? And I would ask our city clerk to listen and to see if there's a response. Thank you.
On October 24th, Option 3 stated that Precinct Number 215 would add 1,853 residents from Ward 5 into Ward 3. The current Option 3, as of today, states that Precinct Number 215 would, it says, stays in Ward 5. 479 residents from Ward 3 are added to Ward 5. So, in the present Option 3, Ward 3 is losing residents. In the prior Option 3, we were gaining a significant number of residents. So, that is a very significant change and not really understanding, the current thing also does not state the number of residents impacted, whereas the prior one stated 2,236 residents would be impacted.
Okay, let's see if we can get you an answer.
Hopefully that explains. Thanks.
Yeah, so, right. Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed at the meeting on October 24th. Option 2 added residents to Ward 3, not Option 3. Option 3 only takes residents away from Ward 3.
So, what is brought forward tonight on Options 1 and 3 are the same that were presented at the previous meeting?
Yeah, the numbers in the staff report are correct, and I believe it also cites the number of residents impacted in each, in Option 1 and Option 3.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion to move this to consent? Okay, please cast your votes. And I think somebody's going to have to lock out, can we?
Yeah, should I?
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. Counselor Springsteen, your vote, please. You're on mute.
I don't understand the explanation.
Okay. Counselor Franks, I have your yes.
I need, I need to understand the explanation.
So, the explanation was that what was brought forth by council or presented to council at the previous meeting is the same as what's before us tonight?
No, but I'm looking at it, and I'm not seeing that it's the same.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I could add, the staff report refers to Option 1 impacting 1,149 residents and Option 3 impacting almost exactly twice that, 2,236 residents. So, that, the impact number is in the respective tables in the staff report.
Thank you.
But, but on October 24th, it said 1,853 residents would be added to Ward 3.
I believe.
Today, it says the opposite. 479 would be added to Ward 5 from 3.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Counselors Springsteen. We move forward from council's direction that we received on October 24th with Options 1 and Options 3. Neither of those options add residents to Ward 3.
But, on October 24th, the staff memo that was provided with Option 3 states 1,853 residents from Ward 5 into Ward 3. That's under Option 3 summary. That is your staff memo on October 24th. I have the two in my hand.
Right.
There it is.
Thank you. The options presented at October 24th, Options 1, 2, and 3, the numbers, the numbers were checked with GIS staff for this, for the drafting of the ordinances and this, this ordinance and these options, and the numbers are correct for Options 1 and Options 3.
But, what you're saying is Option 3 should be the same today as it was on the 24th, right?
If there are any number discrepancies, we clarified those with GIS staff for the staff report. The summary tables in the staff report for tonight, Options 1 and Option 2, Options 1 and Option 3, excuse me, we didn't move forward with Option 2. The numbers are correct in the summary tables for Option 1 and Option 3.
So, is there?
If there's a discrepancy, then...
So, you're saying the one on the 24th was wrong? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if there's a discrepancy, then I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's off by 1,500 citizens, though. That's my issue.
We double-checked the numbers with GIS staff for tonight's staff report. The numbers are correct.
I think that, I think that we need to dig into that more. I would be against this motion.
So, Counselor Springsteen, what I would recommend then is if you would like to vote no, and then in the next two weeks, if you'd like to check this work and verify, we can do that before second reading.
Okay.
And it actually provides more time for council to digest the two options and the public as well.
And that's partly why we're not making any decisions tonight, so that we have the opportunity to look at both on the 12th. So, I'm going to assume that you are voting no?
Yes.
Okay. So, that passes eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen, and Counselor Olber is not with us at this point. Okay, next up is the use of the Consent Agenda. It's been for expediting council action. It contains both resolutions and first-reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First-reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening. On first-reading ordinances, the public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by City Council. Any council member may request an item on the Consent Agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under General Business. Will the city clerk please read the items on the Consent Agenda into the record?
The Consent Agenda includes Items 7 through 14 and Item 17. Item 7, approving minutes of the City Council meetings. City Council Special Meeting, October 17th, 2022. City Council Regular Meeting, October 24th, 2022. Item 8, Resolution 2022-64, reappointing a member to the Victim Assistance Compensation Board. Item 9, Resolution 2022-65, appointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Item 10, Resolution 2022-66, declaring the City of Lakewood's decision to opt out of the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program (FAMILY). Item 11, Ordinance O-2022-20, rezone a portion of land located at 7050 West Hampden Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, 80227, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item 12, Ordinance O-2022-21, amending Title 5, Chapter 5.56 of the Lakewood Municipal Code to update language-related to the enforcement of the Lodging License Program. Item 13, Ordinance O-2022-22, declaring the intent of the City of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of storm sewer facilities along West 14th Avenue between Wadsworth Boulevard and Lamar Street, and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests subject to further council approval. Item 14, Emergency Ordinance O-2022-23, authorizing the conveyance to the Public Service Company of Colorado, three permanent pocket utility easements on property owned by the City of Lakewood and located adjacent to Peak View Park. Such conveyance related to the South Wadsworth Boulevard and Morrison Road Improvement Project by and through an emergency ordinance for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety. And Ordinance 17, sorry, Item 17, Ordinance O-2022-24, amending municipal ward boundaries for the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on the proposed resolutions. Nobody's indicated a desire to speak. Okay, I'll close public comment on those, and before I ask for a motion, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Franks, the Chair of the Screening Committee, if you'd like to comment on Items 8 and 9.
Yes, I would, Mayor. Thank you very much. I did want to let my fellow counselors know that the Screening Committee is recommending the reappointment of Dana Roginsack for Victim Assistance Compensation Board as the Lakewood Victim Assistance Advocate, and also recommending the appointment of Karen Goldman and Lisa Johnson for our Lakewood Advisory Commission, serving three-year terms that would start January 1st.
Fantastic. Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no objections to the nominations. I do want to note, though, that in the past, we have had, these nominations were open to comment for the general public, an example of which would be when Mr. Whitman was appointed to the Budget and Audit Committee. We had a couple of former councilwomen weigh in on that, among others. So, why were the comments not allowed today?
So, I did open the public hearing on the resolutions for these two resolutions?
I understand. I'm asking a procedural question. We are not, we did not allow, in Lakewood speaks, public comment.
Oh, in Lakewood speaks on the platform, okay.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that we don't allow public comments on items on the Consent Agenda, but I'm open to have any conversation with anyone.
So, going forward, we just need to make sure resolutions that are on the Consent are available for public comment.
Got it.
I mean, it just mirrors, mirrors what I would do just now.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Franks, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of the City Council meetings and order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing, except for the date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which have, are included in the Consent Agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Before our second, Mayor, I believe she said move for approval of City Council meetings? I think she meant minutes.
Minutes, yes.
So, with that correction, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'll just make one quick comment to our appointments. Thank you so much to the folks who've decided to serve and volunteer. It's very meaningful to our community, and certainly for your willingness to hang in tonight for a couple hours. We're going to gain some really wonderful people on the LAC, as well as a great reappointment, so I'm happy to support that. And with that, please cast your votes. Counselor Franks is an aye. Counselor Springsteen is a nay. That passes eight aye, one nay. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, will the clerk please read Item 15 into the record?
Public hearing on Item 15, Resolution 2022-67, authorizing use of Lakewood's credits pursuant to Xcel Energy's franchise to bury electric distribution lines along South Wadsworth Boulevard between West Vassar Avenue and West Woodard Drive.
Okay, now open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-67. Nobody's indicated a desire to speak. If you'd like to speak, please say so. Seeing no so, I will close public comment and ask for a motion reminding the community as well as council that this presentation was on Lakewood Speaks.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-67.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes nine aye, zero nay. Will the clerk please read Item 16 into the record?
Public hearing for Item 16, Resolution 2022-68, approving a Chapter 14.27 blight designation pursuant to Chapter 14.27 of the Lakewood Municipal Code for the property located at 1,000 to 1090 South Wadsworth Boulevard in Lakewood, Colorado.
So, now, open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-68. We'll note that there was one comment encouraging council to vote no on Lakewood Speaks. And it looks like we have a hand up online, so we'll go ahead and move James Hermosa over. If you give us your, have your name, if you give us your address or ward, we'll start your three minutes. Good evening.
Yeah, it's actually James' hero, Massa.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the correction. Go ahead.
Thank you for the time to speak. I'll be brief, because I just learned of this, this very recently. I'm a business owner that's affected by, by this resolution, and I was just made aware of this today. I don't think the business owners in the area or in the center are even aware of this. And I have to disagree, after reading through this evening, the report on blight, I have to disagree with much of it. We signed a seven-year lease not long ago, and there's at least three other businesses that just moved into that area. And in my experience as a small business owner that has multiple locations across the front range, we tend to move into centers that are, you know, not new and shiny and not super high-end, but we have family-oriented business that tends to bring better business, better patrons into the area that actually uplifts the community around it. And I think a center like this, this center is by far not the worst center that we've actually moved into and seen the centers improve and grow. So, I'd be, I'd be very skeptical of actually agreeing with any kind of blight designation on this, aside from the fact that apparently someone had did a report on it just recently. And it would leave, as a business owner, and again, as a business owners in that facility, and I venture to guess other business owners in the area that might be affected by this type of movement that's been happening. I would say that it would leave a bad taste in small business owners' mouth for the City of Lakewood, for business in the City of Lakewood in general. We invest a significant amount of money. We're not, we're not corporate megaliths by any sense of the imagination, or we're non-national, and so we put a lot of family money into these things when we open a new business. And it's, it's a bit disheartening to see this type of action being taken when we're trying to help the community around us become a better community. So, I would, I would disagree with the entire designation of blight, just in that center, from my own experience in opening, in opening businesses in centers that were like it and actually far worse, which turned around within a couple of years.
Okay. Thank, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, we have caller ending in 1791. If you give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going. Or, I'm sorry, 1791. Caller 1791, you are open to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll make this comment quick. My name is Jennifer Novelli, and I'm the Facilities and Construction Manager for Enterprise Leasing Company of Denver, and we have a enterprise rent-a-car location at 1050 South Wadsworth Boulevard. We too found out today that this had been brought up, and I mean, our comment is just simply that it is a fully functioning business and operates in a perfectly acceptable order. We feel safe there. We like our business there. We have a lease until 2038 that we intend to keep and keep running our business in Lakewood.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nobody else? I'll go ahead and close public comment and turn it over to Mr. Smith. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking some time and put this on the agenda for this evening before the council's Resolution 2022-68 is concerning a 1427 blight designation, and it considers two properties that are essentially at the northeast corner of Mississippi and Wadsworth. Just for clarification for folks at home, 1427 is the numbers of the chapter where the Strategic Growth Initiative landed, the Residential Growth Restriction, all of those, even Initiative 200, all of those incorporated right there in the 1427. So, I'll refer to 1427, and that's exactly what I'm talking about there. As you'll recall, there was an opportunity for property owners that were not in urban renewal areas, that were blighted or designated as blighted previously, to go through an application process to, to receive that 1427 blight designation consideration. It'll be my pleasure in a moment to introduce you to Ann Ricker from Ricker Cunningham. They are the consultants on this project. We also have some folks from the ownership groups, Center Point Properties are with us this evening, and they'd be happy to answer questions after Ann does some presentation on the actual blight study itself. Ricker Cunningham's one of the most experienced firms in blight studies in the metro area. They're very knowledgeable about the urban renewal process. So, she's, we'll give you the highlights of the report, the full report that was in the packet. Lakewood's 1427 blight process is nearly identical to the urban renewal blight process. There's a couple of different twists to it, but for the most part, 1427 and urban renewal are aligned from a methodology standpoint. The results are very, very different. 1427 does not have anything to do really with urban renewal. It has to do with that blight designation for the purposes of 1427. So, the condition survey, the blight studies included in the packet, the staff memo also refers to Resolutions 2020-7 and 2020-24. Those are two resolutions that were passed by council to help define blight as used in the 1427 designation. And part of my job here is to make certain that everyone knows that we went through all of the elements that are included in those two resolutions, the process that council sent out. So, applications come forward, and they come directly to council, and we schedule them as, as we're able to get them into the council's consideration queue. There are 11 items on the table on the top of Page 2, and that has to do with process. I'm not going to read through all 11 of them, but I'll hit a couple of the highlights. Bottom line is, the boxes on all 11 of those have to be yes. So, in other words, we went through the process, we accomplished each one of those elements. So, for example, was the condition survey conducted in strict alignment with the criteria of the methodology required for the state statutes determination of a blighted area? The answer to that is yes. We, it was conducted in that way. Another one that's on the list, were the property owners informed upon presentation of the condition survey report, City Council would determine whether sufficient conditions of blight consistent with the state urban renewal law exist to designate the property as blighted for the purposes of 1427? Answer to that is yes as well. Couple more here, were the property owners informed that council's 1427 blight determination would sunset in a defined number of years? They were informed of that, and it's five in the resolution for folks that are looking for that information. Were the property owners informed that council's 1427 blight determination would not change tax collection nor change the ability to use power of eminent domain or to come under the LRA's authority? All of those are true, and none of those would happen if this 1427 blight designation were granted this evening. So, the consultant's report indicates that there are nine of the state's defined blight elements that exist on the property. That's sufficient for a 1427 blight designation. The minimum requirement is four that you have on there, and so there are nine on this property in accordance with the report. There's a second table in your memo that talks about the characteristics that are part of that urban renewal, and that's what the consultant will go over with you, each of those, of those conditions. This project is exploring potential redevelopment opportunities that would follow the current zoning regulations and city code. So, the underlying zoning doesn't change whatsoever. It's the exact same zoning on it. That's the MGS zoning that's, that's on that property. The site's located near various modes of transportation, including RTD routes, bike routes, trail access, other active transit options. The study area is located within the Colorado Enterprise Zone, and that's a program that aims at promoting a business-friendly environment in economically distressed areas. So, enterprise zones are areas that generally see a higher-than-average unemployment or higher poverty, lower incomes. Through this program, businesses are encouraged to invest, grow jobs, and engage with their communities, and so this property is in that Colorado Enterprise Zone. Property is also within the CDBG area, that's the Community Development Block Grant area, as well as the, what we call Lytech Census Tract, which is the low-income housing tract census. Let's see, nine of the 11 factors, or at least four need to be there. I'll quickly point out that the property, if it does receive that 1427 blight designation, again, won't change the zoning, won't grant additional zoning entitlements. I did review the Lakewood Speaks, as the mayor alluded to before. There was one comment not in favor of the resolution there. And so, with that, I will introduce Ann Ricker of Ricker Cunningham. They're a nationally recognized real estate and urban economics consulting firm. They're very familiar with the Lakewood area. They've done quite a bit of work out here. Ann will quickly run through the contents of the condition survey report, and then we will look forward to answering any questions council may have after that presentation. Thank you very kindly.
All right, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ann Ricker.
Ms. Ricker, welcome, and let the record reflect that Counselor Olber is back.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides in the interest of time, and the first few slides were really for your all's background information regarding our experience in this regard. As Mr. Smith said, the property that is the subject of this work is located, it should say, in the northeast quadrant of South Wadsworth Boulevard and West Mississippi. It includes two parcels and three buildings. As you can see here, the owners, and they have representatives present, the owner is AEI CPP and LLC, Contact Information Center Point Properties. The entire assemblage represents about 5.62 acres and just under 65,000 square feet. The, you can see in terms of the year built of the three parcels, they range in age from 38 to 56 years, and you can see in the bottom there, two, and two of the three, and this is only because there wasn't information available... there wasn't information available for the third one, you can see that the property values, since the properties were acquired about five years ago, have declined by 1.3%. One building and the other building, almost 25%. As Mr. Smith said, the zoning for the property is MGS and will remain the same. That includes both mixed-use developments, projects, as well as community commercial. But there's, when you read it, there's an emphasis on the fact that transit improvements are and will continue to be developed in the area. Therefore, the zoning recognizes that today it tends to be more of an auto-oriented environment, but it specifically speaks to improvements in this area having less parking to obviously then encourage greater use of the transit. It also talks about providing stronger access to adjacent neighborhoods, as well as pedestrians and bicyclists. And we look at this, I think it's really important because we're looking at the properties as they are today, but also because this is about an area within a larger community planning area, we're looking at what the community's intentions are going forward and saying, can this property deliver on what the community's intentions are? So I just want to make sure you knew that's why we're looking at what it is today and what the potential for it is relative to the community's vision. As you can see in the application, it was submitted, I think it was November 4th of this year. And as we say down at the bottom, in part of the summary, it includes a mix of, well, it includes primarily commercial buildings, but ultimately, and as of yet, my understanding is there's not a specific development program, but the intention is to have a greater mix of commercial and residential uses. Therefore, that's why the applicant is here requesting the 1427 designation. And as you know, that requires a finding of blight. As Mr. Smith mentioned, in 1427 of your municipal code, it states that you're relying on that definition of blight from the Colorado State Statute. And just as a reminder, and he mentioned it too, the statute requires, in the context of urban renewal, but since you're following that path, it requires a finding of at least four conditions present somewhere within the area. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, we found the presence of nine either identified or observed within the subject property. Again, we summarize here by saying that nine of the 11 were present. I think it's important to say that they're present at varying degrees of intensity. So some of the conditions that I'll briefly discuss are very obvious in terms of a danger or really preventing investment, reinvestment in the property, such as environmental contamination from previous tenants. Some are less obvious in terms of graffiti, lack of landscaping, things like that. So we absolutely acknowledge that. We try to acknowledge that and really characterize things as they are. So they might qualify in terms of how the factors are described in the statute, but we fully recognize that there's an intensity level among some of the factors versus some of the others. Take some water. So really quickly, I'll go through these and hit the high points on some of the conditions that were present and identified within the context of those factors. Please stop me if you want to ask questions as we're going through or even afterwards, and if I'm going too quickly, let me know. In terms of factor B, all of these factors, all of these conditions you see here in terms of vehicular access, internal circulation, parking lot layout, all of those things were identified as an observable condition. But what really stood out in the context of this factor was the single access point along Wadsworth Boulevard. I think it's safe to say that were that project to come forward today to CDOT, it probably wouldn't have been approved just because of the distance of that access point from the intersection. Also, it's a shared access. So even the two parcels at the front of the property that are not owned by this property owner, they all share not only some of the parking, but also that access point. And that can be troublesome if the owners don't get along. If there'd happen to be a different owner that would come along, and they couldn't arrive at, you know, how to work that out, how to go forward and continue to share. It just could be an issue going forward. But really, the concern there was with the safety. In terms of factor C, this is very much like factor B because, you know, it emphasizes vehicular access. So for all the same reasons as I just mentioned in B, they would apply to C. But the other factor here with C is parcels that, because of their shape or size, would be considered inadequate. And when we define inadequate, it's saying, based on your all's zoning of this parcel, if it was unto itself, okay? Let's say that the owner sold the third parcel, 1090, that now uses the parking, that provides parking for the other two parcels, they would not have a site that's large enough to meet zoning requirements and have a viable use. So it works as long as it's part of an assemblage, but it doesn't if it's not. And that's why, you know, we also emphasize here inadequate lot size, but it just specifically relates to the one property. In terms of unsanitary and unsafe-
Are we asking questions as we go or at the end?
At the end, Counselor. Thank you.
She said, "Ask as we go," so.
I apologize. I didn't know what your protocols were.
No. We'll wait till you finish the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So let's see. We're on D, unsanitary and unsafe. You're going to see some of the references in this context show up again in the context of other factors. One of the things that's pretty noticeable, and you can see it here in the pictures, are, and this is not uncommon, it's just a reality that impacts this property and other properties in the area, is any pedestrian, wheelchair, walking, bicycle, because there's no dedicated bicycle lane, even though obviously in your comp plan, there's a big, heavy emphasis on a desire for mobility by bicycle. There's really not a safe place for pedestrians to walk along this corridor. And again, with all the transit uses that are coming, that's really in conflict. So we just highlighted that. And with that, when you're looking for safe mobility, alternative to non-vehicular, alternatives to vehicular, you're also looking for adequate lighting in that. All of those things are deficient from the city's own standards. They exist until investment is made, and then things are brought up. But as they exist today, they're considered inconsistent with what you have considered to be safe and desirable. The other factors, unscreened trash, things like that, again, present graffiti, again, present, but less impactful than the other items. And then with that, and probably the most impactful in the context of this factor, and again, this will be discussed later, is the presence of past hazardous contaminants and the impact of any that have been there in the past or continue to be there, and how that will continue to impact the property in terms of remediation, types of tenants they can have, all of that going forward. So again, in terms of intensity, that's the one we really honed in on in the context of this factor. In terms of E, again, this one, you can see some of the overlap here, deterioration of site and other improvements. This one, I wanted to make sure I emphasize, I don't know if you guys, I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with the property. I don't know how recently you've driven by or if you do that prior to a meeting like this. But, and this speaks to what one of the previous people said, is that, you know, you look at it from the street and it looks pretty good. This is an interesting thing that's happened that we discovered in the context of this assignment. This property owner purchased the property about five years ago, and they made improvements to the building. And as we discuss in the report, you know, it's less obvious in terms of the vertical improvements, looking at it and saying, well, that's not too bad. You heard that earlier. It's more obvious in, you know, what the landscaping should be, what the, you know, you can see the parking surfaces, the loading areas. That's a lot more obvious. But what happened, and I think we really highlighted in factor K5, the last one, I think it becomes more evident, despite the fact that they invested money when they acquired the property, it was at a 42% occupancy, which is, you know, insanely low, obviously. And since then, in five years, and even with those improvements to the vertical buildings, it's only, it's still below 50%. So there's obviously other issues going on that, as we discussed, had to do more with the configuration. Some of the conditions inside, obviously the bigger issues, there's a lack of sprinklers and all of that, but there's some real physical issues beyond just the outward appearance of the building that are going on inside that essentially have rendered it less usable, I guess I would say, and I think that's reflected in the vacancy rate. But I'll hit that again right before we're finished. In terms of factor F, unusual topography or inadequate public improvements, again, you're going to see some of the same things with regard to the sidewalks and that. What was probably the most, we considered the most impactful in the context of this was the water and sewer lines that go from the street into the property. Based on information provided by the property owner and confirmed by the city's Public Works, they've even said that the capacity and condition of the water lines are not sufficient for the building, even in its current condition. I'm guessing, and this is just me guessing, is that the low occupancy rate probably plays in their favor in that regard. But were the property to be redeveloped, particularly in a manner that the city has expressed in terms of their desire for that area, it would absolutely have to be replaced and resized and all of that. And it's, you know, it's a significant expense and often why people that own property don't make these major investments, because it triggers all kinds of additional investments that they'd have to make. And if, you know, the balance sheet can't cover it, then they don't do it. And that's about the last thing you want, is to discourage somebody from investment and reinvestment. So that was the discussion in the context of that factor. In terms of H, and there's just a couple more, existence of conditions that endanger life or property. You know, where we honed in here, all of the things that we said, and actually, these are all very impactful. There's a lack of fire protection equipment or sprinklers within the buildings. Obviously, I've mentioned the hazardous contaminants. Also, a high crime rate, interestingly, since 2018. Burglaries or robberies in the area are up 400%. And not just within the area, and the area that we looked at was a half-mile radius of the property, but also the property itself. Just in '22 alone, there were more than five incidents of break-ins. And there's some visible evidence of that, I think, in one of the specific units still today. In terms of buildings and properties that are unsafe, again, you start to see the relationship. So H, I, and J are very similar. J, you'll see the emphasis is just on environmental contamination. But here in I, we're really looking again at the same things, and for the same reasons I said before, if there's a lack of fire safety equipment, obviously, the buildings become less safe then. But we've also presented here one of the tables that is in the context of discussion, J here, in terms of environmental contamination. With regard to this factor, and it's significant, we found 25 properties within a half-mile radius of this property that are being monitored by the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. I've done other work for you all in the city and other locations, and this is probably the highest number I've seen, but including the subject property, and that's the one we highlighted in yellow. The two past uses that seem to be the biggest, have provided the biggest impact or ongoing impact to the property were a gas station and a laundromat, which is not surprising. And then the last factor, K5, this is, you know, it's called high service requirements, but basically what that means is that there's a disproportionate amount of municipal services being spent on this property, whether it's to address a fire concern or a police concern or a medical concern. And that's absolutely obvious when you look at the incidence of historic traffic incidents and accidents, as well as the different categories of crime. So that is present, but so is the substantial underutilization. And again, just to remind you, what I had said earlier is that when they originally acquired it, it was at 42% despite investment. And I would say favorable market conditions, too, at least, you know, before COVID and all of that, it didn't turn around. They weren't able to make it turn around. And so it remains at just the occupancy at just below 50% today. So in conclusion, we found nine of the 11. Obviously, that exceeds the statutory threshold. And, you know, the bottom line is, is that were they to try and make improvements, from an economic standpoint, I can tell you the numbers wouldn't work because they don't have the revenue, even going into a redevelopment project like this. But more importantly, they would need, obviously, your finding to advance community goals expressed for this property. And we've just summarized here on this slide what we thought to be the most significant conditions that were identified as they relate to factors that are listed in the statute. And then we list below that what the consequences are ongoing, are today, and would be ongoing from the presence of those conditions. And that's it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So we have a bunch of lights coming on. I don't know if it's easier for you to take a seat. That way you don't have to stand. Okay. Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. First of all, this property is in Ward 3. It's in my ward. I am quite familiar with it and took some time to drive around because I drive past it almost every time I get in my car. It's right down the street from my house. And I just want to remind the public that this process of 1427 blighting was put together by a previous council, you know, and property owners have the right to request a blight study if they want one. And I understand that it makes it much, much, much easier to redevelop a property because there are some restrictions around housing units and things like that that wouldn't need to be faced with a blight designation. So I do understand the efficiency and the financial necessity. And I also agree that this area needs reinvestment and redevelopment. It really seems like, you know, that's probably the best way forward. I've heard from a lot of residents along the Mississippi Business Corridor, from about that intersection, a little bit past it on the west side of Mississippi, all the way down to Sheridan, residents who've expressed the need perhaps for a urban renewal district that would really benefit the entire community and move our goals forward of creating a walkable, more walkable community, a more vibrant, you know, mixed-use business corridor that makes it possible for a lot of different people of different means to be able to, you know, live where they work and get around if they don't have a car. And those are all things I care very deeply about and, you know, recognize that this particular property definitely does need some reinvestment. I guess my first question, I know that one of the protocols is letting the business members in that community know that this is going on, but we heard from a couple of people that they were unaware of that. So if you could just maybe speak to that?
And if the, yeah, if the owner wants to take a seat and just introduce yourself, please, thank you.
My name is Tucker Mannion. I'm the, oh, there you go. Sorry about that. My name is Tucker Mannion. I'm the CEO of CenterPoint Properties and one of the, part of the ownership group. I'm the CEO of CenterPoint Properties and one of the, part of the ownership group of this property. Yeah, I do want to address the few calls there, and I do apologize for not reaching out to the tenants. We didn't feel like it was, I guess, the appropriate time to talk with them, but there was a misunderstanding there. We have no intentions of removing the tenant that called in. We signed a seven-year lease with them. Parts of this center, I think it's important to understand that there's three parts to the center, and certain parts are working, and we're going to try to put money into those parts, keep the tenants that we have, and make it a better situation for the community and the tenants. Where we're running into issues in particular, in particular, is 1,000 Wadsworth, and that's where the box space is, and that takes up over 30, 35% of our center. That has been vacant, it was vacant when we acquired the property, is still currently vacant. We've poured millions of dollars into this location, and look, some parts worked and some parts didn't, and that's the part that is not working. So that's where we would concentrate the focus on any kind of redevelopment. We're not looking to move out any of our tenants. We love our tenants, we want to keep our tenants in there, and we look forward to working with them. So we'll reach out to the tenants tomorrow and apologize for not making aware of the blight study and what we're asking for today, but I just wanted to address that.
One other question or perhaps comment for now, and I may come back for a second round, but this study was undertaken, it looks like, in August and September of this year. About four days before August started, we actually passed a couple of things here on council to make it easier to move forward with redevelopment, in particular with housing, without having to go after one of these blight designations, which is to designate 20% of the housing available on the property as affordable, as defined by, I believe, gosh, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was 110, 108, AMI? And below? Was it? Well, I'll go back and check my numbers. And that, that-
Probably 120.
120, then 90, 90%.
Yeah, I believe that was correct. I don't think we actually changed the, what the 20% definition was. And so that's also an option. That allows all housing units to be obtained upfront, no banking process, no public hearing. You know, it does exactly what I imagine we're hoping this blight designation will do, as well as provide something that we really need in our community. So that's more of a comment. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Springsteen?
I mean, first of all, Mayor, I was the first one with my hand up. We know that, because I was trying to ask questions earlier, and I always get put to the bottom of the line for some reason. But I went over to this property today and talked to almost all of the business owners. Not one of them knew about this. Several of them had just negotiated leases, not aware that the owner was essentially, in my opinion, negotiating in bad faith, because at the same time, you were asking for a blight designation that, by the way, the city has tried to slide under the radar during Thanksgiving, just went on to the agenda like two days ago, as far as I know. These are real people over there who have owned businesses before, some of them like two decades. The liquor store has been there for 17 years. I sat there and watched people come and go constantly. The Enterprise Rent-A-Car uses the backspace to park their cars. I talked to some of the employees. They told me that it's safe, that they have no vandalism of their cars, that they have never been broken into, that they have very, very expensive cars there, and there is no issue with crime. And by the way, I was walking around there after dark, not feeling like I was going to be attacked. The Night Owl, Marvin and his dad Ike have run that business in the community for years. They were shocked to hear about this today. The laundromat, Wave Max, when I went over there this evening, it was full of people. There were people coming and going. There's all kinds of entrances and exits from the parking lot, either from Mississippi or Wadsworth. There's really no issue with getting around that parking lot at all. There was brand-new business teaching self-defense. We heard from, we heard from James, who had called in. His wife happens to be a city councilwoman in North Glen, so she's probably well aware of this kind of attempt to, I don't know what I want to say. I mean, here's the thing. We need businesses in Lakewood. What we are demonstrating tonight is that you should be skittish if you want to open a business anywhere in Lakewood, no matter how good the strip mall or the property appears to be. I guarantee you that Belmar itself probably has more vacancy than this strip mall. Should we blight Belmar? I think that this particular attempt at blight is an attempt to throw something at the wall and see what we can get away with to get around SGI and the vote of the people. And the next thing I see on the horizon is Jewel in Wadsworth. Is that going to be next? There's a bowling alley across the street that looks a lot more blighted to me than this place with hundreds of people coming through in a day. This is a commercial zone. I took pictures. I took my own pictures. It's a beautiful parking lot. These are beautiful buildings. So you're going to have these people with the blight study come in and take pictures out, because I saw where your pictures were taken. They were taken behind the building. They were taken in the recesses of the farthest reaches of this property. They were not taken where I took my pictures. This, this is a-
Just forgive me, Counselor. Can we get a question, please, so we can, we have a lot of lights on, a lot of questions, so if we get a question, that'd be great. Thank you.
One of my questions is, this is my ward, Mayor. I'm going to talk about this as long as I want to.
Certainly, we'll come back to you, but I'd like to get a couple of questions and keep moving to the rest of the group. Thank you.
The looks I saw on people's faces today, when I told them that essentially people want to declare this a slum, and there were people at the Night Owl who are neighbors, who have homes in the area, who are concerned about property value, because once you declare it a slum, everything around it is a slum. And so, you know, past hazardous contaminants, okay, well, you bought it that way, so how is declaring it blighted going to get rid of the contaminants? They have to be dealt with, don't they, one way or another? Deterioration of the site? It looks beautiful. There were 100 cars in that parking lot on Saturday morning when I was there. Unsafe conditions of the sidewalk? Talk to the city. The city should be dealing with that. I mean, so one of my questions is, just because you make a bad investment and you're not making as much profit as you would like, and you can't get as many tenants as you would like, why should we be declaring things blighted? And how do we think, as a city, this is going to attract small business owners to our city? We are shooting ourselves in the foot with this very light request if we pass it, because these business owners deserve better than that. They deserve better than to have their customers think that they're going to, you know, the middle of a slum. I mean, so one of my questions is, when you're doing these studies, and we found out that you make at least five, five grand a pop, right? This one was probably more, but tell me how much you made on this. But when you're doing these studies, why don't you do what I did and go around and talk to the people who are actually there every day, who know about whether it's safe or not safe? Even the people at the laundromat who were broken into said it wasn't that big a deal to them. So why do you not talk to these business owners, and why do you not consider them in this decision-making? Because to me, people who have invested their blood, sweat, and tears into businesses for 20 years deserve better than to be misled, and you're saying that you're going to, Mr. Mannion, that you're going to talk to them tomorrow because I called you out, because I went and told them what you're up to here? I mean-
So, so Counselor, we're going to try to unpack that and not just berate an applicant who's before us once again, so-
I'm irate about this.
Okay. So, two things, right, wrong, or indifferent. We don't require-
No, you don't get-
We don't require, unfortunately, tenant notification. Maybe that's something that we need to deal with. But secondly, let me just correct something. Belmar is blighted, so I would like to turn that over to you two to answer some of those questions, and then we'll continue. Thank you.
You don't get to mute me, Mayor.
Counselor, in our policies and procedures, it states if somebody is acting the way you are, it's my job as Chair to bring it back to order, and so that's what I'm doing. I'm asking for the applicant, I'm asking for the applicant to start to address some of your questions.
I am protecting the businesses. I am protect-
So please go ahead.
In our community-
I can, I hit a few-
Yes, please, thank you.
That I missed, and please, if I, if you have some that I missed, please let me know. Regarding the two days, you know, notice, but I do want to just tell you at least what the dates were that we know of. We were told by the city on the 15th of November that we had to have our presentation, the document that you have ready for your packets, on the 18th. So, yeah, I don't know what happened in there, I just wanted to make sure you knew that those were the dates that we had been working with. The comment of, once you declare something a slum, everything around it becomes a slum. You have one of the prime examples in the state of Colorado. I actually, years ago, had the opportunity to work on the blight study for the original retail center, and we actually, because of our work, tracked the property values all around the urban renewal area that became Belmar, and just because of what happened in Belmar, the values across the street, even if those properties didn't change use, didn't make a single improvement to their buildings, actually increased in value. Slum is, it's a bad word. She's appropriate, or she's actually correct. If you read the statute, you know, the word slum is in there. It's slum and blighted, and I hate it. I hate it, you know, the word for anybody, especially when you own property and to think of it that way, but it truly is just a legal term that's part of the statute. It's one of many, many terms. Yeah, it's not a great term, but I think the conclusion that everything becomes slum or less attractive or less valuable, there's so much empirical evidence, and you have one of the best examples here in Lakewood. In terms of 100 cars, can you guys park 100 cars in that lot?
I'm, that's a lot of cars.
Yeah, I don't, I've never seen, I mean, I had to go out at different, on different days, different times of days, and different days of the week, and I, I'm just telling you, I never saw more than a few. And yes, I did take pictures from the back. It's my job to take pictures from the outside. We don't go in any private businesses unless we're given authorization, and so we always take it from a public area where the building can be visible, you know, for anybody, anybody from the public, and we did that. And we walked all around the building, and I have other pictures, and was not selective, didn't pick a bad weather day or any of that. I don't subscribe to any of those tricks. How will this attract small business owners in the area? I think that was a rhetorical question about the city, but you heard the property owners say they don't plan to kick out their tenants, they plan to improve the building, and most of the developers I work with that work in infill areas do everything they can to reincorporate tenants back in, but also create new space that could attract, because it's sitting vacant. One thing I failed to mention when I was making my presentation, I don't know if you noticed in the last appendix, but they had, they, the property owners, had kept a log of all the comments that when brokers had shown people the different spaces, and I think there were like 87 or 85 comments, and of those 85, only six turned into a lease. And if you read those comments, do read those comments in detail, and they say why they didn't select this site. That's incredible documentation we don't usually have access to. Is there anything else, Mayor?
Well, certainly, we'll come back. Thank you, Counselor Springsteen, for sharing your photos with us. Just another clarification, you know, there are long-term leases, there's long-term businesses that have been there for a long time, and I think what I heard you say is that the portion you're looking for is not those existing businesses. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. We're looking to address the vacancies at the center that have been vacant for, ever since we owned it. I assume that box space has been vacant for over eight years. It's the econo, it's not economically viable, not only for us, but any other future landlord, and it's, it's part of the property that needs to be addressed, and it's going to be a long-term rent for the whole center.
Counselor Springsteen, you're out of order. So go ahead and finish, please.
Spirit Halloween has not been in there every year.
Counselor Springsteen, you are out of order.
Spirit Halloween, I can address that. The Spirit Halloween signs a month, two-month lease per year. It's not a viable tenant. It's, it's, and it's still a vacancy. It's not anyone that's actually signing a lease with us.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Thank you. I have kind of a series of questions, and I'll try to burn through a handful of them, and then, you know, I might, might need to come back. So one point is, I just, I do want clarification on this point around the- around the, um, the address. So, just to be clear, because I believe, Ray, that there's, that there, different buildings have actually distinct addresses. But it looks like the blight study is for the whole area. So, if we blighted the entire thing, I just wanted to be, like, really clear that there's not, there's not any legal reason why what you're saying, is that, like, you're only trying to blight that one spot?
No. May I answer that?
Yeah, whoever.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I think, if I don't answer correctly, if I didn't get to the, the heart of what you're asking, please let me know. But, yes, there's a thou-, uh, the building that's 1,000, that's in the northern, and then 1050, and then, uh, 1090. The only thing I wanted to clarify is then there's two out parcels also, restaurant and automobile. Yeah. And those are separate ownerships. So, you would be looking at those, those three parcels. It would be, because the ownership is what it is, if they were different owners, then maybe you would consider them separately. But, but because they're a single owner, you, you know, you would wanna look at them. And they're asking you to look at them altogether. Also, remember the one parcel I talked about, 1090? That property, there's absolutely nothing you can do with that as a completely separate ownership. It must be part of an assemblage. It, yeah, it would just be zero value. So, did that answer your question?
Um, partially, it does explain why on your end. I wonder maybe if Ms. McKee Brown has any thoughts, or if this needs to be addressed, you know, later, around if, if the entire, if all of those buildings as one sort of property are being blighted, then, like, I know that it doesn't change the zoning, but then legally, they're all, I mean, there's not anything preventing them, them each from being treated the same way, rather than this, like, sort of discreet, we're gonna do this with this one, and these other, you know, businesses will be treated differently.
I want to get an answer back to you, a, a complete answer back to you at a later date, because I'm not prepared to answer that this evening. But I can tell you this. The way the blight, the way the blight code is written, it really does require that the property be looked at as a whole. So, if it's all under the same, uh, ownership, you, you can't just chop a piece of that off. It, it's a whole ownership, a whole property. And especially the way this particular one was developed. So, it has to come before you as a whole. I think, though, the question you're asking is, by blighting the whole thing, is there a potential negative impact upon those businesses that are, that have a lease? And that the property owner intends to keep there? And I don't know the answer to that at this point.
Yeah, I think you've nailed down what my question is, and thank you, thank you for that. I have another question, which is just around the, um, the idea of crime. I know that there has really been an increase in crime generally, across the Denver metro, across Lakewood, and across Colorado. And to me, an increase of robbery or vandalism that mirrors that increase does not indicate to me a blighted property. So, do you know how those numbers compare? Or if there's another city human that knows those numbers?
For me, um, and that's a really, that's a good point. The only nuance I think I would add, and if there is somebody who can add, um, I can't speak to it. But, we did specifically, I don't know if you noticed, we, um, stopped at 2,000. So, we did 2018, 2019, and 2,000. There was data avail-, available. In fact, I think somebody from the city said isn't, or maybe it was the property owner said, don't we have more current data? It's, um, it's deceptive because of COVID. You know, there wasn't as much traffic. There, people weren't out, businesses weren't all open. And so, we tried to capture a period of time that was probably more representative, or as close to representative of this time period post-COVID. So, just for clarification, that's why we did that. But, in terms of comparing it, again, that's just one of the factors, but it's a good question, and I don't know.
That actually leads me to another question on timeline, right? If the renovations happened about five years ago, that's 2017, approximately. And so, then there was only two and a half to three years before then COVID happened. And I recognize that it's still only half-occupied, but again, there is like a real trend of, of we're struggling to have our, our small businesses come back. And I think that this idea that, that COVID, because it was an exception, even though it was so recently, that that therefore doesn't, isn't a main indicator? Or isn't, um, you know, causative in some of these points of data? Like, I, I just, I have trouble with that methodology. And like, I don't find that we're far enough out as a broader community for, both in terms of crime rates, in terms of occupancy rates, in terms of, you know, traffic, for like, for that to not actually be a component of where we're at today? Like, that, things started really reopening in earnest a year and a half ago, right? And so, that's not enough time to actually see if something, like the, like investing in a property before COVID is actually gonna do what you need it to be doing.
So, yours is a statement, and, but I, I think-
A point of discussion, for sure.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good one. And I'm a real estate economist, so I think I can speak to this. But, you know, let's let the property owners do. COVID was absolutely significant, but it was significant to real estate in a couple of ways. One, it accelerated trends that were already in place among some businesses. In retail, some kinds of retail, it was one of them. So, it accelerated it, and it exasperated it. It wasn't the only thing that affected retail businesses or other kinds of real estate uses. So, I, you know, I, I wanna clarify that. It, it was absolutely a factor. And, you know, 10 years from now, we're gonna look at the trend maps and the graphs, and we're gonna see its impact. But, you try and look at things from more years. You look at it 10 years, and, and you kinda smooth out the bumps, right? It was a significant bump, but, you know, things have come back. I, I would argue that having made improvements in 2017, and prior to things really shutting down, there was plenty of time, based on how healthy the market was at that time, all things being equal. Again, there were trends that were already in place that were making it difficult for small retailers. That's a fact. And that's been a fact for the last couple of decades. So, I think it accelerated that. But, I would, I would only, you know, I'd say disagree, or wanna debate some more, at least, the idea that the improvements during that time, if you look at how your absorption rates throughout the city were in other centers that were, um, whether they were newer but better configured, um, they had less obsolete space, they, they were designed better, um, they, they absorbed. You know, they were still at a healthy clip. After they made those improvements, they, you know, maybe not as competitive as some of the newer ones, but should have been more competitive, were they gonna get some of the growth that was happening, that other properties were capturing? So.
Ken, I think my last question in, in this round, at least, and then I'll, you know, hand over, hand over the mic, is just for clarification on the zoning. I know it was mentioned a couple of times, it's not gonna change the zoning. But if we could get clarification on, like, what that zoning actually allows for? And it was in the packet, but I just think it's an important part of this conversation of like, yeah, it won't change the zoning, but there's a lot of possibilities with that particular zone. So, if we could just kind of run through that?
Yeah, it is in appendix, I think it's appendix B. We put in the four pages, so.
Yeah, um, I think that the public doesn't generally get to the appendix, appendices. So, I was hoping that that could just be brought into this conversation.
Do you want me to have a couple?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Hang on. Let's see. And it is MSG. MGS?
Mr. Smith has it behind you.
If Mr. Smith got the answer right in his brain, I know that this is also, you know, I would, I would definitely accept that answer.
Okay, so permitted land uses, um, attached dwelling units, multifamily, group home, group residential facilities, bars, clubs, daycare facilities, adult or child emergency medical, entertainment facilities, indoor fitness, private galleries or studios, hotels, light manufacturing, a mortuary, motel, motor vehicle sales, um, horticulture, personal service, restaurant, retail, convention exposition center, park, religious institutions, schools, home businesses, limited land uses. You probably don't wanna know those. Oh, you do, okay. Adult businesses, um, animal care, contractor shop, medical marijuana, motor vehicle rental or leasing, motor vehicle sales, um, car wash, pawn brokers, community garden, never, on a busy road like that, that would not be smart. Shelters, um, any warehouse.
I can put you out of your misery. I, I do appreciate you hearing me a little bit. I just think that it's important to recognize that when we talk about, oh, the zoning won't change, when the zoning is kind of a broad one, as this one is, it's, I think, important to recognize that while zoning may not change, usage still can.
There you go. Yep.
Thank you. So, I have Counselor Abel Jansen, then Franks.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you return to, I believe it's slide 16, the, uh, crime reports? There you go. That indicates that crime is mostly down in the area. Aggravated assault's down 33%. Arson's down 33%. No attempted homicides, auto theft down 9%. Burglary down 19%. Larceny and theft down 30%. Robbery is up 400%, including 10 instances in 2020. Well, next door to this, uh, that graph is one Villa Cottonwood Plaza crime. There was a robbery at the Jasmine Market in 2021. One. There was a robbery at Giant Discount Liquor. One. In 2020. So, I don't see where a 400% increase comes in. I certainly don't see 10 robberies in that, um, second graph there. But to continue, sexual assault is down 78%. Simple assault, down 20%. The only thing that's up is traffic incidents. So, can you explain to me how you get a 400% increase, citing 10, um, robberies in 2020, when the other chart says there was only one?
Um, so, the four, okay, so the 400% and, um, why we honed in on that? I think if it was, um, sexual assault or murder, even those are obviously, like, worse, you know, crimes. Because this was a retail center, we honed in on things that would be particularly meaningful for somebody owning a commercial center, and what a tenant would likely ask. And that's why, you know, we looked at robbery. Now, the fact that it's 400% because it was a low, it was a low number, but it increased by a high percent, I mean, that's, that's just the math. That's how it goes.
My point is, there are not 10 robberies in this Villa Cottonwood crime, uh, Plaza crime chart. There were not 10, there were two over the span of two years.
Okay, the, the ma-, or the table on the left is for a half-mile radius around the subject property. And the reason that, again, why we wanted to, um, highlight both, usually, all we have access to in terms of data is the, the kind of information that's in the table on the left. And it's working with your police department and resources. They use LexisNexis and some other sources. We had the ta-, the information on the right because the property owner had continued to keep a log, and they've had ongoing discussions with the police because of their concerns associated with the, um, with those break-ins. They can speak to that more than I can. But I do wanna clarify, one geography is different than another.
And, so you're telling us you want us to approve this blighted condition on this site-specific plot because of crimes that occurred within how far? A quarter mile?
A half mile.
Half a mile.
No.
What does that have to do with this site-specific blighting condition?
Okay, so, A, I don't care what you do. That is entirely up to you. I am presenting an objective opinion based on my work and 30-plus years of experience. It's entirely up to you. Two, that is one condition among 11 factors. And within each factors, there's something like four to eight conditions we look at. So, I wouldn't think that your decision would rise and fall on one condition within one factor. That's entirely up to you if it does. So, I, I just wanna make sure we're clear about that.
I, I was a newspaper reporter for 35 years. I wouldn't settle for this kind of, uh, comparison. And you say the other 11 conditions?
Factors.
Factors. which I'll cite in your, uh, study here, says those 11 factors have, not only have to exist, but they have to be a, quote, "menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare." So, which of those 11 conditions is a menace? And before you say contamination, the contamination that you refer to requires, quote, "no further action," according to the information y'all gave us. In fact, a lot of these things seem to be based on a, on something down the street. There's a laundromat here, and I think I know dry cleaners. But you also mentioned a dry cleaner that was on another piece of property. That's not relevant to the blight condition on this property, especially when there's no further action required. Mr. Smith, how many of these blight areas have we designated outside, uh, urban renewal areas over the past three years?
This is the 10th consideration, um, the, of previous nine. Why, you considered eight of them, you found blighted, one you did not.
Thank you. I don't know whether this is a fair question to ask you, but how many affordable housing units have been produced out of those nine properties?
I'm sorry, sir, I don't know the answer to that.
I do, none. How many properties that are naturally occurring affordable properties have been demolished to make room for market-rate apartments under these blight conditions?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer directly to that question.
Okay, thank you. I'm concerned that the, because we're looking at, at statistics that are within half a mile here, I, I'm just concerned, as a former newsman, about the accuracy of these statistics.
I can only tell you the source, um, and that your police department uses the same source, so, but again, again.
I believe the figures. I just don't think anything that happens within half a mile of a site up for this blighted designation is worth consideration.
So.
We, this is a site-specific thing, and there have been two crime, two robberies.
So, just, just a couple, um, of points. Not every condition, and remember, again, I said that there's a number of conditions associated with each factor. Not every condition considered a half-mile radius. Very speci-, very specific ones did. And, and sometimes that's just because of the information that's available. For instance, here, oftentimes, we have to rely on that. I will tell you, and I, I, and the property owner needs to speak for themselves, but, you know, if a real estate broker, if, if you're going to look at space, and you go with a broker, you don't just say, tell me about the conditions in this area. Tell me, you don't say, what, what happened on this property, and forget what happened on this one across the street, and this one. You wanna know the area. Now, whether that's five blocks, a quarter mile, a half mile, that's different for everybody. But I would argue that, and, you, you consider all- argue that an, you, you consider all of those. And in the context of the environmental contamination, that's very, very important, why we look at a bigger catchment area. And that's because, and you can read this in the report, things that happen on one property, and that was the case here, have flowed through and affected other properties. And it happens through plumes, which was the case here, and groundwater. It doesn't stay just on-site. It can happen here and it can affect other properties. And we talked about that in the report.
And it says there was no further action.
And then for the no further action, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. Those are actively monitored. Now, it's very important when you go to the EPA website that you get the exact definition. To us, no, no further action means one thing, but in the context of the EPA, it doesn't mean that they're not being looked at. They're still on-site, and there are still things that could trigger them coming back and looking. That's why they remain on, on, you know, on the list.
I believe our ordinance is pretty clear that these judgments are be, are to be made depending on the conditions on the site for which the blight declaration is requested. Now, if you go out 20 miles, you'll be able to get some of the robberies up in Evergreen. This makes no sense to provide us with information.
Yeah, I understand.
Things that are happening within half a mile.
Thank you.
Counselor Jansen?
Thank you. Counselor Abel, you stole my thunder and answered some of my questions. So, and actually, I, I was also on the COVID. I'm thinking, I'm thinking a lot of businesses are, are still struggling, you know. I mean, I got hit. I have a small business, and I got hit not right away, but, you know, it's dwindling, dwindling now with everything increasing, short supply, you know, it, we're, we're, all small businesses are struggling. I shop at this shopping center a lot. I do. I don't know if that makes me, I can't say it, or I don't know. I, I do. I do. I go there. I, I just signed up for some fitness. So, yeah, I, I go there a lot, and I like it. I like the people there. I don't see any blight. I really don't. I don't see it. And, and the thing with the robbery, I, I think this was a little misleading, having that there with 400% and then having it next to it. And I was confused about that also. So, thank you, Counselor Abel, for making that clear.
Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Certainly wanted to thank my fellow counselors. Many of the questions that I had have already been raised. I did want to take the opportunity to let the property owner, and I certainly appreciate the, the desire to improve the property and the desire to attract more businesses. Certainly, we are very interested in that. We are very small-business friendly, want to certainly encourage that. I think that, you know, understanding the vacancy rates, I worked downtown for a while, vacancy rates, I think, are a problem all over. People are rethinking office space, rethinking retail, and those types of things. I guess the, and I don't really have as many questions, more as comments, but the blight designation in this particular situation really revolves entirely around residential. Otherwise, it's not necessary. The Strategic Growth Initiative, now codified as 1427, doesn't preclude any commercial investment or commercial changes. And so I think that's important for the public to know that this particular blight designation, if provided, what it does is it, it sort of releases the development from any constraints related to the, the Strategic Growth Initiative, some of which are around a community's desire to be able to weigh in on larger projects and to be able to weigh in on things they do desire, like we, we get a lot of feedback about attainable and affordable housing for, you know, folks, you know, housing for veterans and lots of special populations. So for me, the, the big concern comes in that this particular strip mall is no different than many other strip malls around our city, all of which, you know, I'm sure would like to do additional development. But it's the blight designation that completely removes it from any community input, from any oversight regarding the amount of density that might occur in a particular area. And then Counselor Maya Guerrero had you kind of list the zoning. That doesn't preclude any of that. It's really the residential component. And I think that when those numbers get to a certain point, I think council weighing in on that and the community being able to comment on that is an important part of 1427. And so this particular request gives me great pause. So those are more comments rather than questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I have a couple of comments. I might have some questions before we go into the second round. And I will start with, I appreciate that you've come in and made this investment. You heard folks saying that, you know, you've tried to tear down the neighborhood. You actually came in at a time when we really wanted you to come in, and I know that the community was thrilled because I remember what that center looked like before you came in and before you invested in it. So I appreciate that, and I thank you for that. I know through Alameda Connects and, and a lot of the other groups, we were really excited. Counselor Stewart brought up a great point, and frankly, I would get away, the, the spot blighting served its purpose, I think, for some time that we had to do. And frankly, I don't like it. I don't like that you're in this position. I don't like that you're having to frankly deal with some of, you know, the contention that shouldn't be directed at you because this is a process that council created. And so I thank you for standing in there and doing that as well tonight. We did make some changes that would allow with that mix. And if you are truly looking at that, that could be the path of least resistance. I will also say, in a lot of conversations, I think when we're looking at, we just have, and this is, this is a longer play. The only, you know, with this, you have five years. You don't get any of the real added benefits of urban renewal. But if you're willing to have that true conversation, this, this group or the urban renewal group is about to look at potentially adding areas. And, you know, we hear a lot in the community about not only your center, about things east of you, about Caddy Corner, the bowling alley that's been vacant for 10 or 15 years. So that gives you a lot more tools if that were to be, but that's a longer play. And right now, before you, you have the opportunity to look at a community need that is affordable housing and having some sort of component if you're looking at that. Because as is said earlier, really, this changes a residential mix and makes it exempt, and, and you could do a lot. So I'm, I'm struggling. You did what council asked. Whether or not there's questions related to the findings of fact, that's state statute, and you found them. And it's been said before in the past, you can find blight in a lot of different places. And we only needed four, and you found nine, and, and there could be discussion about how those were found and whatnot. So I'm, I'm really struggling with that, and I don't fault you for what you're trying to do because you have invested. And it's unfortunate that folks have kind of tried to demonize you to say that you, you haven't. You took a risk on a, on a center that was really struggling before and has for a long time. And I know you were great to some of those tenants during COVID. There's a, a place in there that you really took really good care of that I know firsthand. So I appreciate that going forward. So that's where I'm at. I wish potentially we would have just got done with the blight designation when we looked at some of the affordability things that we added in August, and you wouldn't be here today. But that's where we're at. And so I would encourage council as we do move forward, we really do need to look at this exemption and look at potentially either continuing on or getting rid of it because it's just not fair to bring folks in 10 times and have the same conversation and the same sort of, well, I'll just leave it at that. But you've been through these. You've seen them. Counselor Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I just kind of wanted to echo what Counselor Franks and also the mayor said, in that I'm, as I'm going through this in my mind, you know, the reinvestment in the commercial spaces and the, the businesses, there's nothing prohibiting that right now. I guess what I should say is there's, there's nothing that a blight designation is going to do to help that. This really, like Counselor Franks said, is about the ability to remove some barriers for building housing, which then to echo the mayor's point, we hopefully have done while also serving a community need, you know, that feels like a win, that feels like a win-win. So I'm struggling with this as well because you did do exactly what a previous council said that you should do. And, you know, we've made some tweaks, and this wasn't, this wasn't part of that. And so here, here we are today. But I'm trying not to be, I'm trying to keep those two things separate and be really objective about the fact that a blight designation is not going to do anything to help the investment in the commercial spaces, because that's, the blight designation is only for housing, you know. And we need housing too. And I'm, I would love reinvestment in that area and have some housing and some mixed use and some businesses and some affordable housing. It feels like there's a way to do that, though. So I guess I have no questions. Those are just my thoughts.
Just going to pause for a second. Is that something you wanted to address?
Yeah, if I can just comment. I appreciate everyone tonight and everyone's comments. So, and there is some conversation about how long does it take to reposition a property? And I've done a lot of this in my career, and typically, the real thumb is three years. Three years to reposition a property. Sometimes it takes four, maybe even five. And we did run up against some slowdown in COVID, but we've had plenty of time and we've put plenty of money in this property that we've, if, if it was viable, we should, we should, we should have seen the results in occupancy. And, and we haven't. And in, there might have been a little bit of delay with COVID, but after COVID, through the rest of our portfolio, we've actually seen really good statistics in retail, actually the best we've seen in the last 10 years for retail that is viable, retail that checks all the boxes that this center does not check. And so no matter any amount of money that we put into this center, let's say we had an open checkbook, we can't change the dynamics of what this center is currently. And no other landlord is going to be able to do that either. There are some parts of the center that do work. And, and as I mentioned earlier, we, we, we want, not only want to keep that, keep those, we want to improve them. And we have really good tenants in there. We wouldn't be signing seven-year leases if we wanted to come and demo the building tomorrow. That just isn't how it works. But there is a section of the center that just does not work, and it will never work. And what concerns me, or which are concerned all of you, is we haven't given up yet. But if we fail, then what's going to be this, what's, what's going to happen to this center? What's going to happen to the tenants that just signed seven-year leases? We're, we're, we're keeping the center clean. We keep the lights on. We're good landlords. But at some point, we can't do that anymore, and we're going to have to walk away. And we're asking you guys to give us the ability to still get a win, not only for us and, and what we want to do with the property, but for the whole community.
To follow up on that, but do you have that opportunity? And I guess, is there, does the model not work on a 20%? I mean, you have, and you're in a Lytec area, right? So you could get, apply for low-income housing tax credits. You have the ability to build market rate and carve out 20%. So I'm not, I just don't understand how that would not work. And then, maybe it doesn't work, and that's why you need to not have that. And that's a fair question.
Yeah, to really make the economics work, we need to have all the options of what the zoning allows for us. And so that's why we're, we're asking for the blight.
Correct, but you still have all the zoning. The zoning's not going to change.
Well, we don't have the, we don't have, we don't have the multifamily component.
Sure you do.
Not the 40, yeah. We'd look to go more than 40-plus units.
You would have that. You'd have to carve out 20% for affordable. So I guess, and maybe that's where there's some confusion in what we have passed.
Yeah, we'd have to run the numbers and look at the economics of it. Right now, we're looking for every option available, and, and, and we would look at it. We would look at all of them.
Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I wanted to clarify one thing that I, I don't feel is the owner's fault here. And that's just that I feel that this was kind of sprung on us as a council. We're being told that, these folks were told by the city on November 15th that they needed their presentation done by the 18th. But I didn't see this until Saturday. So when things get sprung on a council that way, I think that it makes for some suspicion, let's just say. We're working with a definition of blight that is only a resolution, again, that should have gone away or been, or been transformed into some kind of ordinance a long time ago. And as the mayor said earlier, pretty much anything can be blighted. It's not hard to get those four factors. But we have to protect our community and the different uses. And so my remaining questions are just, you know, there was discussion, and I, I think part of the reason I took issue with this is because, to me, to not present this to the business owners around there and just spring it on them, does not feel right. That does not feel honest. And so my question remains, why you didn't talk to the business owners before now? Why you negotiated leases without disclosing this application? There's been some discussion, and we've had this before on blight, whether the owner is willing to commit to affordable housing. And, and I'll just pose that question. We've danced around it. Would you commit to affordable housing? And also, I always try to get this information in each of these blight studies. I'd like to know how much the person who did the blight study was paid to do the blight study for the person who asked for the blight study. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, you know, ironically, one, one of the business owners teaches self-defense, and I'm thinking about going and participating in his business there. But, you know, he quotes statistics. Colorado is number two in the nation in property crimes. Our state far surpasses the U.S. national average in vehicle theft. I mean, these are statewide averages. And so to sort of apply that to a blight study just doesn't seem relevant to me. And so I, I guess that would be the question for the company that did the blight study as well.
Okay, so let's try to, there's like five or six questions in there. So let's try.
There's five, five questions.
Okay, well.
And before you respond, can I answer one of them, please?
Go ahead.
Mayor, counsel, if I may, for the record, Carolyn Wydom, counsel for the applicant on this one. I just wanted to clarify one thing from maybe sort of a legal procedural perspective, and that is that there's no application pen before you for an actual specific development, you know, in terms of what a site plan is going to look like, what the development program is going to be, how many units of what type, how many square feet of what type, and so on. And obviously, as many of you have alluded to, in order for a development to be developed here that includes more than 40 units, of which less than 20% are dedicated workforce, then this blight designation is a precursor requirement for that under the current system. And so, you know, they're just following the steps and the sequence that they're laid out in the system that's been created here by whichever council it was, whether it was a previous council or not. And, and I believe also from a timing standpoint that this application was filed prior to some of the recent changes that you made to Section 1427. And so some of these questions you're asking about, why don't the recent changes that we made make this work for you, is, I guess not specific to the application before you in the sense that those changes happened after this application was filed. before you in the sense that those changes happened after this application was filed. But relative to a specific development program or commitment about any of the details of what that development program might be, I think it would be inappropriate to focus on that as part of the decision-making process for you tonight. And really to think more specifically about the blight factors and the criteria as you've set them forth in your ordinance. And then just one other legal point related to that, although your ordinance does borrow from the state statute in terms of listing the factors of blight and how they're defined and how they ought to be considered, it doesn't borrow from the state statute in terms of some of the processes, like the notifications that are required and so on. And so, you know, I think that Rickard Cunningham was following the procedure as it's set forth in your statute and your code. And some of that is in state statute, some of that's in your code. But it was all in accordance with the requirements as have been set out. And what I'm referring to in particular is the tenant notification, which, you know, it's a different process in the state statute. But that's not the process that was followed here because that's not what your code requires. So just a couple of those legal and procedural questions. I'll let the methodology questions about radius of data and so on be answered by the Real Estate Economist.
And certainly, a follow-up to, to the, the question was about the notification and the signing of leases. And I think what you've said is you've signed leases and you're honoring those leases.
That's correct.
What I, what my question is, it's about dealing in good faith and, and informing the people who are supporting your business of what your intentions are when you're signing leases. That's my question. And I'd like to have an answer because I think that goes to credibility and honesty.
Of course. So we, we sign those leases prior to applying for the blight designation. And we're going to honor those leases. Those, those leases are long-term plans for our vision of this center. And they're not going to be affected by any future development that we do.
But why didn't you tell the owners before tonight's meeting?
It wasn't required that we reached out to them. And it wasn't, we didn't believe, well, we know it's not going to affect them. So we did not reach out to them. But in hindsight, if I was going to redo it, I would have reached out to the tenants and let them know that, about the blight application.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Sharzai?
Wait a minute. My, I had two more questions that weren't answered.
Counselor, I'm gonna come back to you. Counselor Sharzai?
She was about to answer my questions.
Let's let her answer the questions. Go ahead.
She doesn't know what they are.
Counselor Springsteen, do you want to ask your questions again?
How much were you paid?
Oh, I, was it $5,000? I don't know. It was, it was around $5,000. Wasn't a lot more than that.
Okay. And I guess the other question had to do with the crime stats and why, you know, just general crime stats in the, in the state are
I didn't understand.
applicable to this blight designation.
I, I didn't, I didn't include anything for the state. I'm not sure that I understand the question.
All right. I withdraw that question. But can I ask, how many of these studies have you ever not found blight?
Oh, I love that question. In 35 years? I have no idea. But I will tell you, there have been some. This is different, though. Again, back to what Ms. White said, this, you're using the statute for a different purpose. How many urban renewal plans have I been hired to do? And did we not find blight in the process of doing the condition survey? I don't know. I honestly don't know. But I know there have been some.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Sharzai?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate Ms. White sharing that level setting and sort of bringing us back to what we're here to do tonight, which is really to just determine if this property is blighted. And I don't think it is. So I, I'm pausing on this because, you know, when I looked at some of the, the conditions of the factor, I forget the hierarchy, but, and you, you shared about this in your presentation too. Some of them are a bit of a stretch, you know, vandalism, graffiti, landscaping, even the sidewalk deterioration. I think meet, you know, what we're talking about. But ultimately, when we're looking at, is this property blighted? I think we're all sort of saying the same thing, that we're stretching to reach into this definition. And so there's been a number of folks who've determined that there's point to pause. I think that there's some variance in, in people's appetite for considering all of those conditions in that piece. And so for me, I just wanted to be able to share that frankly with you all. I did think that some of the conversations around COVID, I understand that we, you know, I appreciate your economist perspective on that. But I do think that we're in sort of uncharted waters. And for me, in 2017, when I saw revitalization of this plaza, you know, I was excited to see some of the businesses that have come into this. And so I hope that we continue to see something different. And now that you've seen there's opportunities for you to take a different path forward based on some of the amendments that we've made to 1427, I hope that you'll consider to continue to invest in the community. No, there's no question there. So.
That's okay. Counselor Strom?
Thank you. I, I don't have a lot to say. I think most of the questions and or thoughts, most of council has already brought tonight. But, you know, I look at it mathematically. And you guys, you followed the guidelines that we had set forth. I think part of the frustration that many of us have is the frustration with the guidelines as being what they are. But I, I am concerned about the lack of communication with, with the, the business owners that are there to frequent that shopping center, a couple of, you know, with a couple of dearly loved businesses. It is, it's just so challenging because we're, it's such a rock and a hard place as far as, yes, we want development. But at the same time, I see that there are other pathways forward. I am a math person by trade. And so I see nine and I see 11. And the math says it is a blighted situation. However, you know, as Counselor Sharzai, you just mentioned, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel like we need to use that as our path forward. I think there's other avenues. And I don't know what else I have to say. It's just, this, the whole thing has been really challenging. I've been sitting and stewing on this since Saturday, thinking through a lot of things. And I really appreciate my co- counselors' comments and questions tonight, helping me process through this. That's all I have.
Of Counselor Franks, Abel Jansen.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I think where I wanted just to weigh in is we kind of heard earlier that, you know, council set up this process and the applicant followed it. And I certainly appreciate that. But since I was part of that council, I wanted to add a little bit of context that this was put in place by many of us where it was basically one more tool in the tool belt for which if we had properties that had significant issues. And so when I start to hear things like, well, the intensity may be relatively low on something, it certainly gives me pause that it's, you know, not being used as intended. So I just wanted to add those comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of more questions about the study itself. You cite uneven topography and slopes. How much, how much of a drop is there for many two points on this site? I went by there today and I could shoot full on that.
That wasn't counted. It wasn't, in the presentation, I had the conditions and the ones that were present and discussed in the report were bolded. And those that weren't, were not.
Okay. And thank you for that. The, the, the designation of blight is put in statute so you can cure blight. How can you cure blight on property that's half a mile away, or even the one next door?
I, I don't.
You, you have a chart of the robberies and the crime, and that's half a mile away. It goes half a mile away. How do you cure that if it isn't on your property? The environmental contamination, the plume you referred to, if that isn't on your property, how do you cure it? And if you can't cure it, what's the purpose of a blight designation?
Well, in your city, the purpose of a blight designation is to be able to do housing on the property. I mean, that's why you're using it. You're not using it in this context for urban renewal or curing blight necessarily. I mean, I wasn't, you know, maybe that's a question for the counselor that was part of that effort. I, what I understood, and again, this is just me, is that that all came about because it was, you were hoping to control and direct growth of a certain type. But, I mean, that's just putting it very simply. And that's how you guys chose to create a filter or a process by which to allow certain projects to go forward. But your North Arrow is growth control, right? And affordable and attainable housing, I think that's okay to say. And it wasn't necessarily to cure blight. That's what urban renewal does. You're just using the same tool.
Yeah, you're using the same.
You're using the same criteria, I should say.
The same criteria for the same outcome, curing blight. If you're not going to cure the blight, why should we grant it?
So why you guys did it? Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's okay. We're kind of beating a dead horse.
I still haven't heard any explanation of how you, and by the way, this blight condition resolution was put in place to get around the strategic growth initiatives requirements.
Oh, okay, okay.
That is it in a nutshell.
And again, out of my purview.
Our community passed that at the ballot box.
Oh.
And we.
I'm just here to talk about the blight study. I don't question what you did. Please, please.
I understand. But you brought up the why. And I'm saying, why it came about is because folks wanted to get around the requirements of the Strategic Growth Initiative. Still haven't heard an answer to why we should ignore the requirements of 31.25.003 that require each of these conditions to be demonstrated to be a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare of the community.
Go ahead. I think it goes back to the.
I'm sorry, would you identify yourself, please?
Carolyn Wydom, counsel for the applicant. And that section that you're reading from the state statute about making the finding that it's a menace to the public health, morals, and safety, that's really a reference to the police power, to the city's police power, public health, morals, and safety, right? Whenever you see that magic language, you're referencing the city's police power. And in the statute, the reason that's in there is that in order to adopt an urban renewal plan and make a finding of blight, the city must also find that the existence of blight creates the menace to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare, so that you can authorize yourself to use the tools granted in the urban renewal statute. But as, as Ms. Ricker pointed out, in the context of Section 1427, where you refer to the criteria in the state statute, you're not authorizing, if you were to find blight this evening, you would not be authorizing the powers of urban renewal or approving an urban renewal plan. You would not be authorizing yourself to exercise any police powers with respect to this.
I understand that.
And so that finding is one that council makes if and when you decide that based on the factors presented in the report, you wish to authorize yourself to exercise the power of urban renewal. It is not a factual finding made by a consultant. It's a policy finding made by city council.
And 2.47 doesn't include any such reference.
I don't believe so, no.
And it doesn't include a definition of blight, of blight.
Not in 1427 itself. You're right. It's a cross-reference by resolution.
Thank you. I just, I just find some of this, some of these claims of blight condition to be doubtful. And we have another way to go about handling this sort of thing with our recent requirement, suggestion that a certain percentage of these places be affordable. There is one more thing I want to ask. And that is, Mr. Smith, mortuary is included in the list of acceptable uses for the, for the MGS.
I believe that's what you read. I'm sorry. I don't have the sheet in front of me.
It is.
You're asking.
Mortuary is one of the uses.
I believe that's correct.
Would that include crematory?
I'm sorry. I'm not a planner. So I don't know if there's two different definitions there. I think there is, that a crematorium is different than a mortuary. But I, I'm not an expert in that. Maybe others might be able to answer that question a little bit more.
Ms. McKinney-Brown?
I believe the zoning code addresses those separately.
Thank you. In case you haven't guessed, I don't think I'm going to be voting for this blight designation. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Counselor Franks?
I'm sorry. I thought I already read that end earlier. I'm sorry. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-68.
Second. Ironically.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I, I'm just gonna, just, certainly, I think you do an explanation. And I said early, I really do appreciate. I think there's tools that we have in place. And I think we want to be your partner in helping you make this succeed. I think there's a way that we can do that. I don't want to, this is just me, I don't want to see these come back. And so council needs to address this. We kind of put you through the wringer, certainly. And you were beat up tonight, unfairly so in some ways. And, and all of this group was. And it just frustrates me, you know, you know this in and out, you know blight in and out, way better than, I'm just gonna say, this whole group in and out. And so I appreciate that. But I think that we've created some carve-outs that were more in response to what the community wants to see in conjunction with the growth limitations. And so I can't do that. But I think we can continue to be a partner moving forward to make sure that your shopping center is a success and that there could be some sort of mixed use. And I think there's definitely groups that would be willing to help you see that through. So that's what I would like to say. And again, I thank you. I know it's never easy. And I think people really don't want to come before this body in some ways. And I don't blame you. So please cast your votes. Sorry. Please cast them. Could you please, Counselor Abel, vote, please? Counselor Sharzai, vote, please. Counselor Strom, Counselor Stewart. All right. And that fails 10 nays, zero yays. The nays, Paul, Abel, Franks, Jansen, Mayor Guerrero, Strom, Sharzai, Springsteen, Stewart, over. Okay. So moving forward, it's getting late. Do we have anything under general business? Okay, we'll commence into reports. I'm not going to go by ward. If you have a report, please just raise your hand. Okay, Counselor Strom?
Just an announcement that we have Ward Five meeting on Saturday. And we will have a representative from Lakewood Police Department talking about the new kickoff of Neighborhood Watch, new and improved. That'll be at Westwoods Community Church at, I think, 7700 West Woodard Drive. And will also be hybrid. Information is available on the website.
Thank you. Counselor Springsteen?
So a couple of things I wanted to mention. So, a couple of things I wanted to mention, and this has gone by the wayside because we haven't had a meeting in a while, and somebody unilaterally decided that we can't make reports after study sessions. But I had spoken with one of the ladies who was trying to help people at the Tiffany Square Apartments back when the fire happened, and she was working with our front porch, oppressed child, American Red Cross, and was saying that they were trying to place people, that there were things they were trying to collect for people, like clothing and furniture. And so, she had asked me to mention it on council. They were working with the Denver Rescue Mission. And so, if people still would like to help those poor folks who were part of that fire, perhaps reach out to the city who can put you in touch with some of these people. And I think it's really sad that we're not allowed to speak about things like that just because whoever, the mayor or the city manager, whoever it is, has decided to shut people like me up. But at any rate, I also wanted to mention, you know, obviously, we heard a lot of gun violence public comment today. You can see behind me in commemoration for the club, Hugh, shooting that happened, that I just wanted to send my condolences to all of those people and wonder why, you know, the city is not sort of following other cities in flying a pride flag or just giving some kind of commemorance there. And finally, I wanted to mention an article in the latest looking at Lakewood about who runs the city. And nobody signed the article, but the article seems to minimize our role as a council and as a voice for the people. And I just wanted to say that that's not acceptable. We're not just figureheads. We do have a vote, and we saw it come together tonight. I thought this was amazing, how we all worked toward a common goal tonight and voted together. That is amazing. And so, we do have power. We do run the city as well, when we come together for the right things. And, you know, next week, there's yet another attempt at a power grab in terms of holding an executive session on a personnel matter where some counselors are not being permitted to attend. And I think that that is becoming a legal issue for the city now, and I think that we should really think about inclusion of all members of this council because that means inclusion of all parts of the city. Thank you.
Counselor Sharazai and Mayor Guerrero, whoever wants to go, please.
Yes, thank you. So, Counselor Abel and I will be hosting a ward meeting this Saturday, December 3, from 9:30 to 11:00 at the Holy Shepherd Church, 920 Kipling. Marjorie Sloan will be joining us to give an overview on all things RTD. I also want to just congratulate the Mid-Lakewood Civic Association last night. They had their annual tree lighting event, and there was a tremendous turnout for that. So, it's wonderful to see some of these traditions come back in person. And then, finally, as I have been for the last two months, I'd just like to use my personal privilege up here to share that I still stand in solidarity with the people of Iran. To date, there's been more than 400 people killed, many of them young, and over 16,000 people incarcerated. And so, as an Iranian-American, I just want to share my solidarity with those people.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Guerrero?
Thank you. I wanted to just apologize for having to cancel the Ward Two meeting this last month due to the weather. The city ended up being closed at 3:00, and then, having to like figure out how to move it all online versus mostly in person became not possible. And it is, apparently, in tradition, my co-counselor Vincent informs me, for us to cancel the Ward Two meeting in December. So, that is a couple months in a row without having an official Ward Two meeting. I just want to recognize that, you know, we do really miss hearing from you all and are feeling sad about that, and we'll definitely be looking for some ways, maybe online, that we can be doing a little bit more outreach, and we'll absolutely be hitting next year with consistency in order to ensure that we're really getting to hear from as many people as possible as we look to 2023 planning as a city. Thank you.
Great. All right. So, I'd just like to certainly thank our police officers for being with us tonight. Appreciate all that you do, and thank our city staff also, and certainly know it can be a challenge. So, yes, next week, we will be having a work session, and we'll be doing an executive session prior. So, with that, we'll adjourn at 11:33. Oh, oh, Miss Chan.
I thought we were going down the line.
No.
Can I just say something?
Whatever.
So, tonight was kind of strange with the guns, and I'm a survivor of an attack a long time ago, that I was saved by a woman that had a gun. And it changed my life forever. I mean, if she didn't show up, if she wasn't there, if she didn't have her gun, she wouldn't have been able to save me. She was this tiny little thing with this big gun. This guy was six foot seven and had me in an alley. And it was scary. And, you know, I changed my thinking about guns. I changed about everything. You know, it's not the gun, it's the violence. It's, I'm totally against violence. You could use whatever you want, you know? But like I said, as a woman, I feel like the gun is the only thing that I can use to protect myself, and I want to, I don't want to have an infringement, you know? And I think we could all work together to find a purpose, to find something that we could, to get something done, but not infringing on the Second Amendment rights. And I hope you guys understand that. I did take an oath to protect the Second Amendment, and I will do that. So, and I didn't take any money from any groups. I didn't, I don't belong to any groups, but I do treasure our constitution, and that's how we are as Americans. And the women in Iran, I wish they had the Second Amendment. Thank you.